Councilmember Edgar.
Here.
Councilmember Gross.
Here.
Councilmember Kusamoto.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Murphy.
Here.
Mayor Graham Mejia.
Here.
Sunburst Youth Academy Student Council. Ignacio Trejo.
Here.
Carlos Hernandez.
Absent.
Manuel Corales.
Here.
Juan Bravo.
Here.
Brian Escobar.
Here.
Jaclyn Harris.
Here.
Jasmine DeRisa.
Here.
Kiana Isadora. Absent. Montea Rogers.
Here.
David Garcia.
Here.
Ariana Avila.
Hi.
Jorge Martinez.
Here.
Aaron Welch.
Here.
And Juan Molina.
Here.
Please join us in the pledge of allegiance that will be given by class president Ariana Avila and then stand, remain standing for the invocation by Cadet First Sergeant Juan Molina.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation.
Please repeat after me. Though I walk through the valley.
Though I walk through the valley.
Of the shadow of death.
Of the shadow of death.
I will fear no evil.
I will fear no evil.
For thou art with me.
For thou art with me.
Amen.
Amen. Very good.
Thank you.
Would either of you like to speak?
Yeah.
That's a resounding no. Well, listen, thank you so much for coming if you'd like to join our audience.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. You guys always ask so much. Good job. Thanks. Good job. Thanks so much. Sure. If we could, before we give out the presentations, if we could have Lieutenant Colonel Armstrong, please stand up and just give a little brief story about what goes on with the youth academy over there.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Joel Armstrong, Director for the Sunburst Youth Academy, and with me I brought First Sergeant Michael Scott, my commandant, and our partners that we have with Orange County Department of Education allow us to be a community high school where we can take within six months and give our cadets a year's worth of credit.
That's right.
We are a high school for high school dropouts between the ages of 16 to 18 years old, so with the military staff and our partners with Orange County, we can give the cadets the skills necessary to become productive citizens within our state and nation. We thank you very much for allowing this, and I want to thank Councilmember Gross for once again reaching out, and he came to the academy and spoke to our student council, which brings us here. I believe this is our third time here, so we hope to continue this relationship, and thank you all very much for your time.
We always enjoy having you here. If you could, tell the audience the success rate that you have with your cadets.
Our success rate for the residential portion, which is seven and a half, or correction, five and a half months, we average about 90 percent retention, so that means that it's a volunteer program. If they really want to leave, they can leave, but they choose to change their lives and stick with the program. We track them 12 months after they graduate from the residential program, and we call that post-residential, where they take their action plan of all their hopes, their dreams, their goals, and we track them to see, are you still in school? Did you graduate from school? Do you have a job? And we're anywhere from 83 to 90 percent of a success rate, so those individuals...
Well, you deserve a hand for that. Thank you. From the council, we just want to say how wonderful it is to be a partner with you over at the base, and thank you so much all for coming.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
All right, if the council will join me, we have some presentations. Well, we'd like to start first with one of our most longstanding members of the community, Mr. Ed Bremel. If you could please come up, Ed, we have an award for you. And since you have your brother, maybe we'll ask him to come up and stand beside you. We just want to tell you a little bit about Ed. Ed has lived in Los Alamos and has been a valued resident since the city's incorporation in 1960, and was inspired by his parents who were actively engaged in civic matters throughout their lifetimes. He shared many ideas, having to come many times to the council to give us your input. He shared many ideas with the council, including a request to increase handicap spots at the local shopping center and the renovations to the Rossmore Storm Channel. I just wanted to say that he has been persistent. He's come, he's brought it to our attention time after time after time, and he's gotten things done, I think more than I've even been able to as a council member, so congratulations to you, Ed. The City Council of Los Alamos does hereby recognize Edward Bremel for the valued role he played in influencing the repair of the Rossmore Storm Channel improvements and for being a valued citizen. That shows how passionate towards his city.
I've been honored to live in Los Alamos for almost 55 years. I've, I came here when this city wasn't even finished yet, Los Alamos, especially on Cherry Street, Dutch Haven, and my dad was under traffic commission. I've been involved with everything in this city. I've been fighting for everything that needs to be done, especially handicapped people, and people don't know it. If you're not handicapped, parking lot, and I fought for that, I said, they need handicapped parking shop, especially in a lot of shopping centers, and it's very difficult, especially for me. I wasn't handicapped. I could use a walker. Now I have to use a walker. I've been in and out of rehab so many times, but I'm getting ready to leave Los Alamos. I'm going to move up there with my brother to Idaho to live, and I didn't want to, but I have no choice. I can't live by myself anymore, and it hurts me, but I know a lot of the people here. I've seen a lot of you guys, but it's what I have to do to make it, but I appreciate for you guys fighting, finally fighting, and finally getting this thing. It took this long to get this channel put together that I've been fighting for since almost 50 years to fight this channel. They said there's nothing wrong with that channel. I said it is. If you live behind a channel, see mosquitoes, and on Govers and everything else that I have been through with my yard, it was disastrous, and it had to change, and I said, well, I'm going to do the one that's going to do the fighting, and I fought and fought and fought, and they finally got the channel started, and they're going to have it done. I don't know when, but it'll be done. Whoever moves gets my house, because it's on the market. I'll be out of there by at least Monday, and I'll miss you guys all, and I hope nothing but the best for this city and best for the residents of this city, and I love you all. Thank you.
I just wanted to add that Ed's leaving a legacy behind of health and wellness for this community, and we are so appreciative that each of the council members, this is an award we don't usually give, you're so beloved by all of the council members and the staff here, that we wanted to make sure we gave you a certificate that was signed by everyone on the council, and that doesn't happen very often at all, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention because we love and will miss you also.
I love you guys. I'll miss you. I'll come back and visit once in a while. Travel. I have to make it on the plane. I have to go, and like I said, meet Monday, and then I'll try to come down and back and visit once in a while, see how the city's doing and everything, but like I say, I'm missing you. I thought you've been very good to me. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, Ed. Something from the community we just wanted to add. So Ed is an example of an active person that comes in, stands at the podium, like a couple other guys in here hijam, and, you know, and doesn't quit, just like JM, and just keeps coming, but gets stuff done. And, you know, from the community, he works his way into your heart.
He's been doing very well.
Yeah, easy, Ed. You're going out on a high note here. So, you know, if you think about this, though, you know, Ed's worked his way into each council members, and what Jerry said or the mayor said, it was so true that we all signed this because we've all had different times where, you know, you're not the popular person up there. Ed has been very helpful with the community. I'd also say to Chief Mattern, you know, Chief has been over, you know, we don't provide concierge service to everybody, but I think that he definitely took a focus on you and has always stayed, went by, seen you when you were there. I think all the council members have come by and seen you. We're really going to miss you. We wanted, as you're in Idaho, and you think about with your brother here, and this is the first time I've had the opportunity of meeting him, we just want you to know when you're in Idaho and you look back at all the stuff that you're really going to be missed here. We love you, we miss you, and you're always welcome. If you give us a call, we'd love to see you when you come back.
I appreciate it very much.
And a special thank you to Walt, is it?
Yes.
For coming in and being here with Ed so that he could receive the award. Thanks so much for coming.
Thank you.
All right, next, this next award is really something very special. I'm going to call up Naylani, and then also Kelly and Greg, and last but not least Dante. And we're going to have to probably move a little bit so everyone can fit. Right here, honey, right in the middle. How's that? Okay, so we're not going to clap because it will scare, it'll scare Dante. So I'm going to give you just a brief synopsis of what happened, and then I'm going to let Kelly and Naylani say a little something. Naylani is a fourth grader at Los Alamos Elementary School. While walking her dog, she always stops to visit her neighbors and their dogs. On April 15th, she was visiting her neighbor Kelly and her dog Dante. During her routine check, she knew something was wrong with Dante and urged Kelly to take him to the veterinarian. Thanks to Naylani's help, Dante was quickly diagnosed and given proper care. He's now recovering at home where Naylani helps administer with his follow-up care. We are hereby recognizing Naylani for her care and concern for the animals of our community and commend her for her ambition to pursue higher education and become a veterinarian. Would you like to say something, honey?
Yeah.
All right, we're going to let her speak.
Hi, I'm Naylani. I am blessed with this award, and I am very proud that I have dated Dante. He's a very, very sweet dog, and Kelly is a very nice person. I'm glad I have this award.
Thank you. We're not going to clap. Here you go, honey. This is to commemorate all the wonderful things that you did, and I just want to say a special thanks to Kelly and her husband Greg because they reached out above and beyond to make sure that this young lady was recognized for the outstanding work that she did, and it was really very dire that, Kelly, wasn't it, that if he hadn't been diagnosed, he would have lost his life? Why don't I pass this to you for just a moment?
Naylani was on her school break. She came by the house to check on Dante as she normally does with Makajja as well, and she felt his head and looked in his eyes and felt his ears, and the tips of his ears were extremely hot. We had lost our other dog, Makajja, four months prior, and we thought he was grieving, and we had no idea to that extent, and we took his temperature, and it was 104.5, and then we got him to our vet, and they tried to lower it, couldn't. He had to be transferred to a specialty veterinarian hospital. It spiked at 105.7, two days in critical care, and she saved his life. She wants to become a veterinarian, and she is an amazing, well, she was 10, she just turned 11.
Happy birthday.
And she's a fourth grader, and she's just, just amazing. I can't imagine what she'll do in her future. So, so thank you so much for saving his life.
Thank you, honey. All right, so we just smile, I guess, as opposed to, big smiles, but anyways, honey, congratulations on your award, and I think she's also going to be recognized by some other cities also, isn't she?
Cypress had mentioned.
Right, okay, great.
They were going to do something as well, but Los Alamos is...
We beat them to the punch.
No, it's where all of us grew up and went to school, and this is our community since we have, both Greg and I have grown up.
Great.
And I went to Los Alamos Elementary, and so has she, and Greg went to Rossmore, and I would...
We're sorry. That's right, that's right. Well, thank you very much, and thanks for bringing her in. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Congratulations. And just a note, we are working on potentially trying to get her award from Travis Allen's office, who is our Assembly Representative, so we're still working on that for her. All right.
Thank you.
Bye, Dante.
Thank you so much.
Hi, baby. You are so big. Oh, my goodness.
She's a big person.
Yeah.
She's still taking a lot of exercise, and, but he's so... 160 pounds, and only 7 feet.
Wow.
They're nocturnal, it's a great petter. They herd sheep between friends in Spain, and they're therapy dogs in the States.
Awesome.
Just gentle.
A long life, Dante. All right. Bye, Naylani. Bye, honey. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Take care of that, okay? All right, the next presentation we have, Item C, is a proclamation to Chief Mark Stone from the Orange County Fire Authority for Wildfire Awareness Week. Mark, could you please come up? Now, you can give him a round of applause, so. I'll let Mark go ahead and tell you about it because he could probably define it a little bit better than we can.
Well, first of all, I don't know how I'm supposed to go after Naylani and Dante.
No pressure, right?
That's a rough act, so. Thank you very much. My name's Mark Stone. I'm a battalion chief with the Orange County Fire Authority, and I'm here tonight to receive a proclamation from the City Council and the citizens of Los Alamos for wildland fire awareness. As you all know, we do live in Southern California, and it's a year-round job, not just a week of awareness or a month or a day. It's a year-round job. We saw the fires that happened last week down in San Diego County. We also just recently had a fire here between the city of Seal Beach and Long Beach, in which we had to use even two of our helicopters on, so. The proclamation basically, in very small words, is be vigilant. We are in a current drought, I think we all know that. If you're recreating in the mountains, you own property in the mountains, or whether you live here in Los Alamos, Cypress or the nearby communities, if you have vegetation by your homes, take time to make sure that vegetation's trimmed back. If you need assistance, you can contact the Orange County Fire Authority. Reach us at www.ocla.org for the Orange County Fire Authority and get more information. But basically, what we want to do is just, we want to remind people how dangerous wildfires are in our communities, especially during the Santa Ana winds, and just bring attention. So, again, to you, Mayor, and the City Council, and the members or the citizens of Los Alamos, thank you very much for the proclamation.
Great, and we're proclaiming that May 4th through the 10th of 2014 is fire, I'm sorry, Wildfire Awareness Week.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nope, and last but not least, we have a presentation of a proclamation to Anthony Brandaby, Public Works Superintendent for Public Works Week. Can you please come up? All right. All right, so National Public Works Week is the celebration of the tens of thousands of men and women who provide and maintain the infrastructure and services collectively known as public works. In 2014 marks the 54th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. The City Council does hereby proclaim May 18th through the 24th of 2014 a National Public Works Week throughout the city of Los Alamos. All right, thanks, Tony. For those of you who don't realize, they cover a myriad of things that you wouldn't even imagine, so I'm going to give Tony just a moment. He's been with the city for a very long time, just to make you a little bit more aware of his business.
Sure, thank you, Madam Mayor. What we take care of is everything from your streets to parks, your street trees, your facilities, the facility you're in currently right now, fleet maintenance, anything that's broken in the city or needs repair, we are the ones who come to it. And if I just may say, we really do enjoy phone calls from the public. We can't be everywhere every time. We have 10 full-time employees, three part-time employees that take care of the entire city. It is a lot to take care of with such a small crew, so we would like to have eyes and ears out there in the city. Please feel free to call us, call City Hall and extension 101, and leave us a message, something good, something bad. We implore everything. Thank you.
Now, we're going to move on to oral communications. At this time, any individual in the audience may come forward to speak on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Remarks are to be limited to not more than five minutes per speaker. I have a couple of cards. If I can call up Miles Cole. And Miles is the Young Professional Presentation of Youth Ambassador Scholarships, and we hire, I can't read the writing, I'm sorry.
Yeah, poor penmanship, I apologize.
That's okay. We don't grade for that.
Yeah, thank you for having me.
Absolutely.
My name is Miles Cole, and I am the chairman for the Young Professionals of Los Alamos in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce. We help provide events that have young professionals the opportunity to network with each other, and we have two scholarships that we give out, one of which is called the We Hire Scholarship, the other being Youth Ambassador, and we have two young ladies that we've selected, so wanted to take this venue as the opportunity to present these awards. The first being the We Hire Scholarship, and the Chamber of Commerce and Young Professionals have selected Rachel O'Sullivan. And the second is the Youth Ambassador Scholarship, and we have selected Kelly Mccone. And both of them will be receiving $500 to be put towards schooling of their choice.
Great, that's wonderful. Well, I'm so glad that you brought them forward for them to be recognized because we do have a little TV show that we call the City Council Meeting, and they'll get a little bit extra exposure, so welcome, ladies, and congratulations.
And Miles, real quick, Miles, can I just say, go Tigers? Thank you.
Okay, and then we have Craig Durfee.
Yes, the Honorable Council and staff and the audience, I'm the founder of distracted driving awareness in complete streets. I have two Facebook pages, one in law enforcement uses currently, and the public. Anybody who wants to have an opportunity, more welcome to acquire the information. I'm here tonight because distracted driving is now a huge issue in California, and I encourage the youth to be careful of cell phones and texting. It is a high rate of the youth fatalities. I also would like to encourage the council to look with the chief, the CHP program just released April 2nd, Impact Team Program, that it can be community involvement at the local high school chapters. With the PSA's Play With Your Cable could actually have an impact in saving lives. I also would encourage you to work with OCTA because they're hiring a coordinator in June, and this is going to help you with an opportunity to apply for grants and help the chief in his efforts to address the safe route to school that OCTA has verbally in public record. Encourage all cities to have advisory committee for bicycles as well as safe route to school and rodeos, and I have Caltrans documents that illustrate the direction for OCTA, or OTS, Office Trans Station Safety, and maybe applying for the grants of OTS for bicycle pedestrian grants with the federal highway opportunity. We can bring an opportunity for the youth to engage in a lot safer practices. Another thing, too, I would encourage the council to is discuss with the chief about having an ordinance in the city, I'm talking to my city about it, the council, is that requiring bicycle lights before sold. I think that's just, we've got to start having visibility, the three-foot rule September 16th is here to knock on your door. There's going to be a lot of resources that you're not anticipating of man hours discussing who did what. So I would encourage the council to look at that and look at working with volunteers in the community to, maybe with the issue with the crossguard issue, there is funds in the non-infrastructure component to give you training, but not the hours, and there are also funds with the law enforcement section for enforcing bicycle pedestrian rules. It's an opportunity, it's a competitive grant, but I'm sure that if you have the letters of support and you can demonstrate the community bicycle organizations within your city for the next grant call in November, you'd have a good opportunity to demonstrate for funds. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming forward.
Question, could you say your Facebook, is it a Facebook page?
Yes.
And it's open for, could you say it for the public?
Yes, it's fine. It's, the one that's really important is California distracted driving awareness, there's nothing like that in California. The second one is safe route to school with my name, Craig, C-R-A-I-G, Apple with the period, Durfee, D-U-R-F-E-Y, and trust me, everything that California has hid, it's there. I've checked it, and it's across the United States, and your cable system can facilitate a change in behavior. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager, if we can reach out and see if some of these grants that would be applicable for us, anytime we can get free money, it's a good thing. Next would be Shelley Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council members. I have my hat on as editor of Orange County Breeze tonight and local community booster. I just wanted to let you folks know that with the Rossmore Community Festival earlier this month, the community festival season is officially kicked off. In addition to the Rossmore Community Festival earlier, there was last week the Cypress Chamber Golf Tournament, which benefited the Cypress High School marching band, which is going to the 2015 Rose Parade. All this week, Hoff's Hut is holding a fundraiser for Hope, which is a food bank supported by St. Irenaeus Parish in Cypress. You present the flyer, and 15 percent donation will be made to Hope from Hoff's Hut. The flyer is available at the St. Irenaeus website, sticypress.org. On May 22nd, the Cypress Police Foundation will have a police appreciation lunch. I hope to see many of you there. For more information, you can go to cypresspf.org. It will be at 11:30 a.m. at the Cypress Community Center. And then, of course, we'll end the month off with Memorial Day, and I would like to call everybody's attention to the fine Memorial Day ceremony held at Forest Lawn Cypress annually. Then, next month starts out with the Sugar Beet Festival. I'm really excited about that. For details on that, sugarbeetfestival.com. On the 18th of June, the Cypress Chamber of Commerce will hold their annual business awards and recognition. Union Bank will receive the Business of the Year. John Morlock, the outgoing supervisor for the Second District, will receive the Man of the Year Award, and for transparency's sake, I must announce that I am receiving the Woman of the Year. the Year Award, and for transparency's sake, I must announce that I am receiving the Woman of the Year Award.
Wow, congratulations.[602.04][602.04][applause]
I have no idea why.[607.29][607.29][laughing] For information about that, you can call the Cypress Chamber at 714-827-2430. On June 20th to 22nd, another festival, the St. Irenaeus Parish Fiesta. Everything that you would think of at a parish festival, please come out and have some fun. On June 23rd, the Los Alamedos Chamber Golf Tournament will be held. It will benefit the Los Alamedos Education Foundation, and you can get information about that at LosAlChamber.org, July 4th. July 4th is the fireworks spectacular. We all look forward to that. And as a publisher, I want to congratulate Los Alamedos, city staff, because I get lots of advertisers in. And the person designing the ad for the July 4th spectacular this year did an excellent job. I believe that was Emma Lanota, but I'm not sure. Right? Whoever did it, it is a gorgeous ad. So be sure to check, I already have the web tile up. You guys should be very proud of your web designer. And finally, July 26th, the Cypress Community Festival. As the chair of the festival committee, I would like to personally invite all of you to come over next door and have some fun. Peter Brandon will be the headline entertainer. There will be a chili cook-off, there will be a salsa cook-off, a car show, arts and crafts booths, vendor booths, a kids' area, the whole shebang. All right? So please do write down July 26th. And I think in August, everybody just leaves town, so there's nothing going on. Again, thank you for giving me the time.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.[723.13][723.13][applause] The next speaker is Joel Block.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I wanted to just take a few minutes to remind everybody about their obligation as citizens. It's coming up in two weeks, and that's to vote. And people don't look at that as often an obligation, but there's a lot of people who gave their lives for democracy, and this election unfortunately is looking like it could be the lowest turnout in a few elections. Some of you may have read the recent articles about comparing the low turnout in the Long Beach election, which was 14%, to the maybe three times as high turnout in Afghanistan facing guns and bullets. So it's not a partisan issue when you're talking about election turnout and the importance of voting. I wanted to introduce myself. I am a candidate in the election. I'm running for the 72nd Assembly District, and it's my first time. I'm not a professional politician, and I wanted to just encourage everybody who has the possibility of being 18 in two weeks to register. And I think there might be a few people who haven't registered yet who are going to be 18 in two weeks. And it's very simple now. All you have to do is go online at the Secretary of State's office, and you can register. This is something that's new. It's only been in existence for a couple of years. It was a big success two years ago, when a lot of people registered in the last month before the election, and I'm encouraging everybody to do that if you are not already registered. And especially people who have moved since the last election, need to re-register at their current address. Thank you very much for the time to speak.
Great. Thanks for coming forward, and the best of wishes to you.[861.13][861.13][applause]
Yeah, thank you, if I may, Mayor. Thank you, Joel. And just for the public, the deadline is today, the 19th, to register in order to be able to vote on the June primary, and you have till midnight. And the easiest way to go is OCvote.com, I think it is. So if you are going to be 18 before the June election, by all means, please go register. But tonight, midnight is the deadline.
And remember, you know, he said it's an obligation, and I see where he would feel that way, but it's also a freedom that we have that they don't have in a lot of other countries. So, you know, you're all bright kids, take advantage of those freedoms that you have, and have your voice heard. All right, anyone else who wishes to speak? Come on up. Please state your name for the record.
I'm Johnny Stromeyer, from Los Alamedos Area Chamber of Commerce, mayor and council. Thank you for, I didn't get this up here, too.
That's all right.
I'm so sorry. I get so busy with everything.[919.73][919.73][laughing] We're having a tri-city mixer on the 27th, I believe it is. Is that a Thursday? I don't have my paperwork. But anyway, it's going to be an Old Ranch Comfort Club. It's going to be Los Alamedos, Seal Beach, and Seal Beach were joining all three cities, and we really hope to have a good time. The Old Ranch has offered the appetizers, so it's a free evening. You have to pay for your bar, so that's your own problem. But the food is all, is just appetizers, light appetizers. They're going to have live music there for us, so it's going to be at Old Ranch, and we'd invite you all to come. I think it should be a nice event. We haven't done anything like that for a long time.
Right. Thank you.
Johnny.
Does that take the place of the legislative mixer you have during the summer?
No, we'll have the legislative mixer again in August. But this is the first time we've tried to do this. That hasn't been decided yet, has it, Dean?
We're working on it.
We're working on it, but we don't have a date set. But no, it's separate.
Great. Anyone else who wishes to speak? Please state your name for the record.
J.M. Iveler. First, congratulations, Ed. We've been on opposite ends a lot of times. I respect the work you've done for the city. For years, you guys have had Dave Emerson come up here and say, "Let's fix Los Al." A few months ago, a bunch of us got together, and we decided, "This council did it." You guys are getting along, you're being very effective, and "Let's Fix Los Al" is no longer a necessary name for a website. So a number of us sat down and discussed it, and it's always been known as Dave Site, because he started it when he was running for public office. We renamed, we've rebranded, we've reinvented, and we have multiple people who are participating now. It isn't just Dave Emerson's website. It's called LosAlNews.com. We invite anyone who wants to, to send us anything via the Contact Us, if you have an opinion, if you want to write for us, if you'd like to participate. This is participation journalism and journalism. We've got people participating from Cypress. We have had people from Seal Beach and Rossmore. Larry Strather has just agreed to do something for us as well. We would love to have members of the City Council putting out pieces. This is an opportunity for everyone to have their voice. We would love to hear from you. We are non-side-taking. We are trying to produce citizen-oriented news. And we look forward to hearing feedback from the community, and participating with the community, and with our council, with Cypress Council, Seal Beach, Ross Moore's District. We just look forward to being able to provide more information. In addition, if you're interested in what's happening around Orange County, OCforUs.com, which was originally started to fight the truck depot, has also been resourced. It is now going out to a number of sites, much like LosAlNews.com, and these are called microblogs, and they're microblogs from around the county, and OCforUs.com is aggregating them. So you can go in, and every hour, we update from all the blogs in Orange County, and we pull all the articles together so that you can find them all in one place, and you can follow them to the original website. And we hope that this will also be a good service for the community, so that you can see what's happening. A great example being in our Assembly District. It covers a number of cities, and there are articles that deal with our assemblymen from other cities that we don't have in our news that we can pick up by going to OCforUs.com.
Great.
So thank you very much for your time, and I look forward to hopefully being able to run articles from you.[1188.15][1188.15][applause]
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Bruce.
He's on the agenda item.
Oh, it's, oh.
Okay, great.
I just got one thing to say. I wanted to thank Chief of Police. I've been complaining about one thing, especially on Cherry Street, their motorcycles. The speed limit is 25 miles an hour. When they go 45 to 55 miles an hour on a residential street, I was always afraid these kids are going to get hit, or somebody's going to get hurt, or the motorcycle's going to fall over. And I asked the chief what the speed limit is, and he said it's 25. And I said, "Well, then you need to come on this street, Cherry Street, and check it out, and then you'll see." And right now, it's done fantastic. I mean, it's changed. And it takes somebody to say something and speak up, because I don't want to see a kid get hurt, or even the driver get hit. I really appreciate it. Thank you, Chief.[1257.15][1257.15][applause]
Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll close oral communications, move on to register of major expenditures. Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Roll call, please. Councilmember Edgar?
Aye.
Councilmember Gross?
Aye.
Councilmember Kusamoto?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Murphy?
Aye.
Mayor Graham Mahia?
Aye.
Move on to the consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be acted upon in one motion unless a council member requests separate action on a specific item. Would any of you like to pull any items in the consent calendar?
I'll move it.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? Motion passes. We move on to 9A. It's public hearing. Zoning Ordinance Amendment, ZOA 13-05, relating to accessory residential uses and accessory structures. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. This item amends the zoning code relating to accessory structures, both residential and non-residential. Two issues presented themselves during the last year that revealed ambiguities within our code. The first one you may remember was a guest house proposed on Marna. The second issue was the introduction of the super garage in Los Alamedos, or the four- or five-bay garage behind a home that was maybe 1,000 square feet. So the garage far exceeded the size of even the house. So those two issues presented themselves during the last year, and the Planning Commission began to look at those two issues and thought that some things needed to be tightened up in our code, especially where the term "guest house" and "granny flat" existed. And their decision was to place any residential structure that's in a backyard under one umbrella of second dwelling units to coincide with the state-required definition. The commission determined that only residential accessory structures that could be permitted should be residential, I'm sorry, second residential units, and that the accessory structure should be prohibited from having bedrooms, full bathrooms, or kitchen facilities. It means that second residential's are allowed with those, but non-residential accessory structures would not be allowed with those, such as a garage. You couldn't have a garage and then have a kitchen next to that detached garage. If you're going to have a second dwelling unit, they understood, second dwelling unit. But having a garage, a detached garage, as an accessory structure that morphed into something else was something they wanted to prohibit. The commission, again, also looked at the large garages without an accessory structure code that clearly defined what a subordinate or incidental structure was. We had garages that were popping up that were four- and five-car garages, and they were owned by the owner of the property, but the house had a different tenant in it. So the, I'll use an example, the Huntington Beach property owner that wanted to use the super garage was not necessarily the tenant in the front house. And so we started morphing into kind of a hobbyist or business or a storage facility. And so they wanted to tighten that as well. That was the real-life example that occurred. So the commission recommended ordinance, which amends the section on detached structures, to provide that unless it was approved before January 2014 as a guest home or a granny flat, that no accessory structure shall be used for residential purposes unless it met the second residential unit definition that we've established. It changed the definition of accessory living quarters from guest house to second residential unit. It removed these different definitions that people were trying to kind of move in on, you know, the ambiguities of having different definitions for a guest house or a granny flat. So they removed those, left old definitions in for anyone that had an existing bill, but no one could have a new one. It amended the residential land use table to provide a cross-reference for those types of uses, and added a footnote that such structures are permitted up to 640 square feet without a site plan review. But if they wanted to go above that, we did allow them to have an option, which would then go to the commission, and the commission could review that consideration. It also amended kind of a sloppy reference in the commercial industrial zone that had accessory structures in there. And we removed residential accessory structures from the industrial zones as well. And it amended the parking requirement to require one space for each bedroom of a second residential unit, and amended the section relating to accessory structures to clean up titles and section numbers for cross-references. And it also provided that non-residential accessory structures, like a workshop or a garage, could only have a half-bath, and not include a shower or a bathtub, because then you think, you know, as soon as they get the permit, they're finalized, that bathroom then becomes, gets morphed into something else, and then the entire structure morphs into something else. And the Planning Commission put a lot of work in it. I want to thank the Planning Commission for all of their work along over three meetings to accomplish this goal. And with that, they recommend the attached ordinance for a public hearing, which would mean you would open the public hearing, take any public testimony, and close the public hearing, and then it would be up for a second reading in next month's meeting.
Okay, great. Bring it back to council for quick questions. Anyone? Dean?
My wife sits on the Planning Commission. And she approved this?
Yes, sir.
We've got a lot of classic, old, old, old cars, 1920s, and there's never enough garage space. And there's times where I feel like I have to live in the garage in order just to keep things moving. And so I feel sold out here.
You can live there, you just can't have a shower.
Need to take that one up at home.[1646.65][1646.65][laughing]
Do I have a conflict of interest?
You have a familial conflict of interest with your wife.
Yeah.
You'll be sleeping on the couch tonight.
Be back in the garage.
Okay. I'll move approval. She hadn't told me a thing about this.
Well, we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Before we do that. Anyone else? No? Okay, so let's open the public hearing. Anyone who'd like to speak on this item, please come forward. I don't know if you're leaving, if you're coming to speak, I'm not sure.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks for coming. Okay, seeing none, close the public hearing, bring it back to the council. Do I have a motion?
The appropriate motion would be to waive the reading and introduce ordinance number 14-03, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Los Alamedos, California approving the ordinance amendment ZOA 13-05, amending the Los Alamedos Municipal Code relating to accessory residential uses and accessory structures, including changes to definitions, removal of guest houses as an allowable land use, and changes to accessory structures, and making minor technical changes to the provisions relating to secondary residential units, and directing a notice of exemption to be filed for a categorical exemption from SEQA, citywide, city-initiated.
I'm assuming that's your motion, Dean.
Regrettably, I'll move that.
Do I have a second? Okay, motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries.
So I want to thank the Planning Commission for this one.
Absolutely.
So I know there's one issue on that Marna property that came up, and I follow a little bit about that, so thank you.
All right, so we're moving on to item 10A. This is a rescission of the City Council action against Councilmember Warren Kusamoto, and reimbursement of legal fees expended.
So I'm going to recuse myself, since this is about me, but I would like to be the first speaker, if I may.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Can we get a staff report, please?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Have the city attorney, Carrie Riesman, do the staff report on this one.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This item comes up because Councilmember Kusamoto, in 2011, had allegedly violated the Brown Act, and the then-the city council voted to basically refer the matter to prosecution. voted to basically refer the matter to prosecution, gave several different options for prosecution, instructed the city attorney to hire an outside attorney to give an opinion, and investigate, and ultimately refer for prosecution. As you know, the Brown Act, well, the issue in this part of the Brown Act was there was a closed session, and Councilmember Kusamoto had allegedly discussed closed-session materials, confidential matters that only the City Council's supposed to know, outside of that closed session. Before the attorney that was hired completed his investigation, or his report, the council thought better of it, and pretty much rescinded the referral, never took action on it. And Councilmember Kusamoto believes that it's detrimental to him to just have this still kind of open. It was never formally withdrawn. So he is requesting that the council formally withdraw the referral, rescind its January 2012 action, which instructed the city attorney to take those actions, and also to reimburse him for his legal fees incurred in defending against the city's actions. My report talks about the fees, the fact that we don't really know how much they were, because he hasn't submitted invoices, but he is making that request. So he has a conflict of interest, or he's declared a conflict of interest. In terms of voting on the first part, as far as the reimbursement, he does not have a legal conflict of interest, and would be entitled to vote on the reimbursement. That concludes.
Thank you. Bring it back to the council. Would you prefer that we go to public comment before we address it here on the dais? Is that good? All right, so we're going to go ahead and open public comment, and Councilmember Kusamoto is asked to be the first one. Troy, could you grab him?
Sure.
Fourth try. I want to thank the council for indulging me. I know there was some other logistic issues, and I wanted everyone here to address this matter. And I do appreciate the council considering this. I have written, and rewritten, and rewritten what I wanted to say, but I'll just try and summarize why I think this matter was sort of unjust, unfair and warranted, certainly not in violation of the Brown Act. And, you know, there's, what I really had hoped for was exoneration, complete, full, complete, you know, 100% exoneration from the charges that were leveled against me in a nine-page written document. So, you know, I guess we can kind of say that I think at least one of you up there knows really what happened in terms of what was allowed to be told to the plaintiffs in this matter. I don't believe I've disclosed anything that was contrary to what was being allowed to be said. The timing of the letter that I wrote, ill-advised as it was, certainly happened after the meeting, after the second meeting with the plaintiffs, at which time the information that was authorized to be disclosed should have been disclosed. So the problem I have with the whole matter, number one, it was written down. Number two, my Sixth Amendment was violated, rights of speedy trial. I wanted to go to trial on this one. And looking at the body of data on this thing, and I have files and files of data, looking at all the facts, I can see why certainly the then-city attorney would not want this to appear in a court, because I would tear it apart. There would be no basis for what the accusation is. So the nine pages that were written that said the seven findings, six findings, totally 100%, could not be supported with facts and data, and I was denied a trial to go and find, to have that all discovered. So I think, you know, we have here, and we see this in, you know, in federal politics at Washington, D.C., the weaponization of the IRS, the weaponization of the attorneys, you know, federal attorney general. I say the weaponization of city staff that happened with the previous council majority took place, and it was not, would not be supported with facts and data. So with that, I am asking for complete exoneration, not rescission of any of these charges, because they would not have been, they would not have held up in a court of law. I would have prevailed. I know that. I've got data here that would show that. I've got the timeline of everything that happened. There was information that was denied to me, and I had specifically asked that from the city attorney. So you look at all the body of what had happened, you look at the simple thing, I think that if I understand in the current city attorney's report, there was an action to hire a prosecutor. I believe that was the previous council's decision. Well, in order to do that, you need to go and ask for permission from the Orange County DA. And I had requested that record, that was that indeed done. So we have a city attorney that did not do that. There was no such record of a request for this body here to prosecute me. Simple, simple, follow the rules, and we couldn't even have that from the previous city attorney. So I say the whole process, you know, the part about sending it to the attorney, state attorney general, the grand jury, and the Orange County DA, which would have allowed me my Sixth Amendment right to due process, was denied to me. And the one thing that should have been done, the permission to prosecute, which is a simple letter asking the district attorney for that permission, was not done. And that would have been all public record. So anyways, I submit to you, I have done nothing wrong. I look for complete exoneration. I thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak on this item?
It's nice to finally have you all here. Defamation of character. To say somebody did something that they didn't do with the intent to cause them damage and pain. Was that the intent of the City Council when they looked at the nine-page letter? No. Was that what happened when the City Council gave specific detailed instructions by a vote to the city attorney? No. When the city attorney chose to ignore the specific instructions, a violation of ethics, I believe, that's when something went wrong. Everyone deserves their day in court. When you charge somebody with doing something wrong, and you're instructed to take that to the district attorney, to the attorney general, and to the grand jury, and then you choose, you elect to ignore the instruction until you leave, and then it's too late for that person to have their day in court, you have to fully exonerate. You have to make pretend it didn't happen. It doesn't matter that we have a nine-page letter. It didn't happen, because they didn't touch all the bases. And if you don't do it, it's a defamation of character. It's wrong. The right thing is to say, "It didn't happen." Now, as a taxpayer, I would personally also love to see this council say, "Okay, city attorney, here's how much you billed us for this. We'd like our money back." I really think that has to go along with it, but I'm willing to see that pushed aside just to clean the mess up. You can't defame somebody's character. The city attorney put out a nine-page defamation of character. It became defamation of character the moment Mr. Kusamoto was not given his opportunity to answer the charges that were brought against him. And he has never been given his day in court, because our city attorney decided not to do what she was instructed to do. You have to make, pretend it didn't happen. Exonerate. Make it go away. It's the only right thing to do. Thank you very much for your time, council.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the council. Anyone who'd like to speak? All right, well, I'll start. This was an unfortunate situation, and sometimes politics gets very ugly and very personal. I do think the fact that Councilmember Kusamoto was denied his opportunity to have this tried in a court, to either exonerate him or find him guilty, was very egregious on our part. If you go back to the meeting minutes, I did ask for that to be done, but at the time, I was in a minority and wasn't able to make that action be taken. So the letter that was written as a council member, I found to be very vague, and not very particular, and in that was not a direct Brown Act violation, which I said in the first meeting when we addressed this. And also that Councilmember Kusamoto was very new, and that in the past, when Brown Acts of this kind had happened, they were overlooked because it was a mistake, the council member was spoken to, and then it was over. So I think that the level and the degree for which he was pursued on this was very personal. And I think that we have learned to get along a little bit better, and I'm curious to see how other council members feel about this. But I absolutely think that he deserved his day in court to exonerate himself. He was denied that by the delay of the council, and certain steps that weren't taken by the city attorney. And I think that we owe him that, as far as, you know, the opportunity to clear his name and exonerate him, because we never proved that he was guilty, but we've sullied his name at this point. So I'm going to go ahead and bring it back to any of the other council members. Dean?
I did talk to, or emailed the city manager. There was a total of six items that apparently the council had specified in action at that time. Apparently, only one of the six, from what I can gather, was done, and that was retaining the city prosecutor. This has gone back and forth, back and forth, and I was not on council at that time. Councilmember Murphy was not on council. Believe the minutes show that Councilmember Murphy spoke against it at the time, that it was before the council, as a citizen. My name was brought up, per the minutes. And again, that was an issue that was never proved. I think under the circumstances, what the city attorney has told us, the statute of limitations to move forward on a charge has expired. And the best thing to do at this particular point is to take whatever action that moots the actions of the initial action of the council on January the 17th, was it?
It was January of 2012, I think.
Yeah, January of 2012. And so that's the direction I'm leaning at this particular point.
Thank you. All right.
I'll go next.
Okay, great.
I've been dreading this for four months. So I'm about to do what I said I'd never do when I was running, and that's kind of say on one hand, and then on the other hand, and the very type of politician I can't stand. But Dean said I spoke against this matter when it was presented, January 17th, 2012, from the audience. I did not feel at the time that to pursue this matter was beneficial to the city. Still don't feel it was. However, it doesn't change the fact that Warren did write a letter. And we cannot rewrite history, which is the one thing I want to try to avoid today. I do not have the information that would allow me to make an informed decision if there was a Brown Act violation or not. However, Warren has been attacked at work, and that just disgusts me at the most basic level. And if we can assist him and find a way to do it, and I'm going to look to you, Carrie, for some suggestions or ideas of wording, I am for that. You're going to have to explain to me maybe what exoneration would mean a little bit. Prior counsel, in my opinion, settled the legal fee issue. Tried to make nice, didn't go far enough, obviously, that we're still here today, you know, didn't go far enough. They, in fact, let their claims lapse. And Warren's right, he never did get his day in court. Other than the investigation, nothing else was done. So that all being said, I don't want to rewrite history, as I said, but I do want to find a solution that will allow us, really to allow Warren to move on and not be, not be subject to this attack. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Edgar?
Yeah. So I've been, I was one of the guys here during the period where this went down. So, you know, something, I think that, to keep this in context, is that the city at that point was in a really tough time. I think that when the community looks at the City Council now, they don't see that City Council anymore. They see a City Council that's working together, we're trying to get things done. We've got really important issues that we're really trying to look ahead. We're looking at the finances. You know, we have an item tonight on the agenda for St. Isidore. There's a lot of things that we're really trying to do that are positive in this community. And, you know, like Richard said, being able to rewrite history or not, however you feel about that, you know, it, I think the bigger picture is, it takes a lot to run for public office. And, you know, it's ironic, JM came up here, if, you know, as a public figure, you, defamation of character does not really pertain. People can say anything they want about you. And, you know, and it probably hurts our family more than it hurts us. We get kind of used to it. This one hurt Warren at work, and I think that's where kind of I draw the line there, because, you know, he maintains a security clearance in his job, you know, family, you know, your religion, family, and kind of priorities come down to city council. And I think at that point, you know, I really struggled. I personally have worked really hard to establish a better relationship with Warren and work with him, and I would be supportive to try to assist in whatever exoneration means. And, you know, just a reminder to the community, I was the guy, when it got nasty, that said, "Stop, we're going too far," and tried to fix it at that point, and clearly, it wasn't good enough. And so, you know, I know I've had discussions with Warren a year ago, trying to figure out, "Okay, what's this mean?" And, "Hey, Troy, I'm having problems at work." You know, I've got to take that at face value, too. And I, look, most of us, everybody thinks that this is our full-time job. This is something we do in the nights and weekends, and a lot of hours. But most of us have, you know, regular jobs during the day that we have to maintain. So I think that's where we've drawn the line here. So, you know, Carrie, I'd be very interested, our city attorney, on what your view of exoneration is. To me, it's unclear. The infraction of the Brown Act has a statute of limitations that's expired, it's no longer pursuable. The fees were offered up as, so those were the two remedies. So the remedy not discussed or not offered by the city staff is, what is exoneration? Could you clarify that for us?
Well, exoneration would require a factual determination that there was no Brown Act violation. So you would need to, you know, go back and look at what happened, and decide that what Councilman Kusamoto did was not a violation. My staff report, or the staff report that the city manager and I prepared, calls for something a little bit different, which is rescission of the referral, removal, withdrawal of the referral for prosecution, investigation, and so forth. It doesn't, would not necessarily be a factual exoneration, but I don't know if the council is comfortable factually exonerating at this point, you know, two years later. So.
All right. I know that that was hard for Troy to do, because it was a really embattled time for us, and I think that we are at a better place, and it's what's best for our community. I would support what Warren is asking for, which is exoneration. And if that means that we have to go back and clarify the points to make sure that he did not commit a Brown Act violation, that is what he's asked for since the beginning. If you go into the meeting minutes, he asked for it, I asked for it. This is the closest we can get him to clearing his name. And for those of you who are not apprised of what's going on, it gets very personal. I'm a renter. They reached out to my landlord. Warren works, they reached out to his work. It's become beyond the normal scheme of what happens with politicians. And I'm not saying anybody here did that. It's just, it's become very personal. And moving forward, we want to represent you, you know, for years to come. And there are certain groups that would take these undecided situations and capitalize on them during elections. And I think we owe it to Warren, because he's a good, honest man, to make sure we take whatever steps are necessary to clear his name the best we can, since he wasn't able to have this tried in court. And so that would be my motion for Warren to be able to have that opportunity.
Could I offer a substitute motion, because on your conclusion of the staff report, you suggest the City Council rescind the January 12th, or January 2002, 2012, action regarding steps being taken against Councilmember Kusamoto, on the basis that we are unable to make any determination at this particular time that any of the charges were valid. We can't. We can't. And so if we say something to that effect, that essentially, in my mind, exonerates without using the word exoneration, but clears the air that there's no longer an issue from that time or moving forward. So if you have the ability to put that into a formalized motion, I'll be happy to make that.
You said it just fine.
All right.
Okay. Before we do that, one last input, unless you two have something else to add?
I would just say, for the purpose of our discussion, so as we try to craft something here, under the city attorney's definition of exoneration, I really, I can't determine that it didn't happen. I really, so I can't go there. I'll go almost anywhere else. I just don't feel that I can say that it didn't happen. I really, and not that I feel it did, I don't know, one way or the other.
I think that that, Richard, to clarify, maybe I wasn't specific enough. This can be looked at by a professional who can make a ruling on it as to whether or not it was a Brown Act violation or not. And if that's allowed to happen, then he has the option to be exonerated. And I think, you know, this situation is already being used to damage Warren in this next election, and I think it's unfair. And I think anything we could do to undo what was done is only fair and right.
Well, maybe an alternative would be, again, just trying to advance ideas, is the reality is, you know, there was a lot going on, and this issue went really into closed session. So really, no one knows, except the people that were back there, what the situation was. If it went all the way through to be improved out in court, then, you know, it's binary, whether we have an opinion or not. So, you know, I think what we're talking about is, you know, removing it before the issue is reevaluated. It's, the bottom line is that it's a rescission. It doesn't, it didn't get submitted. It was never adjudicated all the way to the end, so therefore it didn't have any subjective evaluation. And I think that's where Rich is at. Rich, at least that's what I think I hear, is that, you know, you don't want to cast judgment on something you didn't see.
That's true.
No, but there can be a ruling made on whether or not it was. And I think, I think, Troy, for you, or myself, or Richard, or Dean, if we were accused of something and we had the option to have our name cleared, that would be what we would want. And with that, Carrie, moving forward, like you said, where we would address the actual item, bring it back, and go over it, is that what would be done?
Well, you know, one problem with that approach is if you, if you retained an independent attorney to review it, they may come out and say it was a technical Brown Act violation.
I think Warren's willing to risk that because he believes in his innocence.
And I'm, I mean, to my mind, the council just needs to move on, and maybe without even taking that risk. I don't think it's a necessary risk. If you rescind the action, that puts an end to it, but it is up to the council how to handle it. I'm not, I don't get to vote on that. I just get to make recommendations.
I think that he was denied in the past the opportunity to have it go before a court to be either exonerated or found guilty, and he was comfortable with that. And I think if we don't take this to the fullest means that we can to give him that opportunity, then once again, he's being denied. And I just think that's unfair, and it's, you know, it's not the best that we can do.
So you're not accepting the substitute motion?
No, no, I mean, absolutely. Dean has a right to make his substitute motion. I would just encourage the council that if it was one of you, and you had the option to have your name cleared, and the bad things that have happened to Warren because of this, I think that we need to go the extra mile to make sure that he has the opportunity and he's not denied again to be exonerated for his actions. And I would just ask you, please, to give him that chance.
You know, that's, I think, what we're trying to do here, based on advice from council. I wasn't on the council. I wasn't privy to what transpired in closed session. I was not ignorant to the issues that were going on at the time. I would say much similar to what councilmember Murphy has acknowledged. Even if we go back through that phase, I'm not sure that we can, we can gather whatever evidence and things that were there to say 100% it didn't occur. He said that, but that's half the picture. And the other half of the picture is mired with all of these other things that even the city failed to do. Of the six items, there's only one item, apparently, that was done, and that was hiring an outside attorney, and then that was stopped. So it's unfortunate that it still exists. Based on the attorney's definition of exoneration, we would have to make that determination that it never happened. And I think, as one speaker said, you know, just say it never occurred. In fact, it did occur, but at this particular point, to give him clearance, to rescind the action, we have that authority to do that. To indicate that there was no evidence presented to justify the charges, I think we have the ability to do that as well. And that the action at this particular point, from now hereafter, is a moot situation. It's beyond statute of limitations, and I think we're trying to do the right thing in that particular process, so.
I mean, aren't in fact, I mean, by doing what you're thinking, Jerry, we're really reopening a Brown Act violation, reopening up the timeframe for the statute of limitations, and potentially, if it doesn't go the way that he thinks it'll go, you know, he potentially gets hit a double time when he's, you know. Probably the biggest thing for me is, you know, if you look at the evidence of the Brown Act violation or the alleged, is it was a letter sent to the press, to a lot of people, that can be evaluated. And, you know, and again, I'm not sure, you know, I'm on the other side. I'm not as confident that it wouldn't, you know, it's going to go smoothly. But I'm willing to help on the front-end process by clipping it, calling it rescission, so that the item just doesn't go any further. I think it's a pretty significant risk if he wanted to go reopen the Brown Act violation and then allow the evidence to be evaluated in detail. You know, I've sat through the, both sides of that, and, you know, I just think that's risky. And I think what, you know, the fact that we've spent as much time as we has because we care about him, we really want to try and help him out here, I'm just not sure how far, you know, we want to go with that for historical purposes.
Carrie, can I ask you, is there a way to rescind and say there was no finding of guilt? Some language that says that we're rescinding the action and that going forward, we don't, there's no, there was no finding, there was no, I'm trying to parse words here, too, but...
There's no finding of fact.
Yeah, okay. That would work.
And, Richard, if I can jump on that. The problem with that is that the legal counsel that was hired to investigate it was paid $5,000, and we never got any kind of documentation one way or the other. We asked for it multiple times. We were told it's work product. They didn't have to turn it over to us, but yet we paid him $5,000. I just think that there were some things with this, and again, it was a horrible time. And if Warren is willing to run the risk of having it reopened, or in my opinion, what I thought you were saying is you would bring it back to us as a council, we would review it based on the Brown Act and make a decision ourselves, not reopen the case, not, you know, reopen the Brown Act accusation, just for us to feel comfortable that Warren wasn't at fault, so that we could then exonerate him. That's what my understanding was of what you were saying.
Well, one of the issues is, even if all the facts are agreed to and there's no factual dispute, is it a legal violation of the Brown Act? And it may very well have been a technical legal violation of the Brown Act, in which case you couldn't exonerate him.
Because the statute's run out, correct?
Pardon?
Because the statute has run out.
Well, partially that, but mainly because if it's a violation, then you don't exonerate. I mean, you're not, you're not a jury, you're not, you're not a traditional trier of fact. But if you reopen it, first of all, it sounds like the request would be to have basically a trial in front of this council. This council wants to move on, that's not probably the way to go. You probably want to get, deal with it and move on. But in terms of, I mean, I think the councilman Murphy's suggestion of rescind the action and determine that there was no finding of fact at the time, no finding of guilt, no finding of fact, is probably the most you can do without really opening a new can of worms.
So it's not the same case in America where you're innocent until proven guilty? He's considered guilty because he doesn't have the opportunity to prove himself innocent?
He's not considered guilty.
Well, that's, that's what's being spread through people who would like to injure him.
But, you know, when somebody's arrested for anything, there are going to be certain ignorant people who decide that they're guilty just because they were arrested. Why would they be arrested if they weren't guilty?
Right, but they have their day in court to be exonerated, correct?
Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't.
Wow. We have that opportunity here. Go ahead, Richard.
I think, though, that there, many people are investigated by the DA, and the word gets out there, "investigated," but the investigation really goes nowhere, and you get no resolution as the person who was accused. I mean, all the DA's office, from I've ever been able to determine, says is, we don't talk about the matter, and, but nothing's going on. So I don't think you always do get your day in court. You know, you do, you get accused, and then for lack of somebody willing to prosecute you or proceed forward, you, it just, it just kind of drops by the wayside, which is really what happened here. And that's why I wanted to add the fact that there's no, you know, there was no finding of fact, or what was the other word you used? Finding of fact?
Finding of guilt.
Guilt. That's probably a better word.
This is akin to the victim saying, "I don't wish to prosecute. I don't want to go, you know, I'm withdrawing my complaint." And in that case, the person is not deemed guilty, and no reasonable person is going to say they were guilty because the victim decided not to prosecute. Here, you rescind, you're formally, you would formally be rescinding the referral. And that seems, I mean, that's the most you could get in a criminal case without going to trial and being, and even if you go to trial and you're found not guilty, people are still going to say, "Well, look at that. He got off. He had a clever defense lawyer who got him off." You never, there are certain people you're never going to convince that you didn't do it. So it's...
Is it appropriate to ask Mr. Kusamoto to come out and see if he's comfortable with what we're discussing?
Not really, well...
You want to move this forward, right?
I'm not sure.
He's not allowed to participate.
Yeah, he can't participate. He brought it up.
The thing at this point is, let's take the action that, between what I put forward and councilmember Murphy put forward, vote on it, and then he can come out, and we can determine if, you know, that meets. I mean, I think we're going as far as we can under the circumstances to try and rescind and make this thing right.
Can I ask you a question about the legal fees? Since prior council has already agreed to pay it, do we need to address that issue? I thought the number was around $5,000 since the prior minute for bill we saw.
I don't know.
If you saw a bill, it's not part of the records, and nobody can find it.
No bill was ever submitted. And what they approved was up not to exceed $10,000.
Okay, so you could vote to reaffirm that if you wished, but because it's been so long since the council authorized settlement for up to $10,000, you might want to reaffirm that that's, that that's the council's intention, subject to submission of proof that he incurred that. And I've asked him for that.
All right. So Dean, you had a substitute motion. We take action on the substitute motion first, correct?
Yes. But I think...
It's Richard's substitute, substitute.
Oh, that makes it easy. All right, so is there a second for, is there a second for Richard's motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no, and the motion passes. Okay, so...
Now on the reimbursement.
The reimbursement.
I don't know if Warren wants to participate in that. He is entitled to, so I'll ask him.
Do I need to open the public comment for him again?
No, it's already open.
Okay.
Is there a question?
They're, they're asking for the okay to pay up to $10,000 for your legal fees.
I thought that was already approved up to the city manager's spending.
They're just reaffirming it.
And that was, I think, done about two years ago, if I recall, so that was already settled from my recollection, so.
Just a reaffirmation of support, that's all.
The attorney's asking for reaffirmation.
Well, he's asking that, do we require it?
Because it's been almost two years since that...
Presumably by ordinance, we...
So may I ask, I guess, what the outcome is? Because maybe I have exhausted all my legal remedies, so if I may ask?
City attorney, why don't you go ahead?
The council voted three to one to rescind its prior action referring the matter to the authorities in that there was no finding of fact and there was no finding of guilt.
So if I may ask, the instrument of rescission, how does that handle, the city attorney?
By that motion.
So, okay, so all I have to say to the council is that had I had my day in court, I would have proved that this whole analysis was built on a lie. And again, I will cite that there was two meetings that councilmember Edgar had attended and was authorized to disclose certain information. And one of the key findings in the letter from the city attorney was that my letter to then Mayor Ken Stevens had disclosed information at which councilmember Edgar was supposed to tell the plaintiffs. There could not have been any leaking of Brown Act information that was already authorized to be disclosed to the plaintiffs. So that is why I am so incensed about the whole thing, where the city attorney had, again, went out out of her way to create, to spin a violation of the Brown Act. And that's where I would have prevailed, because you know what you're allowed to tell. You know what you're allowed to say to the plaintiffs, and I didn't quite say that. I think I ended at that, and that was spun into a disclosure of information that the plaintiffs could have used, or the plaintiffs could have used to get a negotiation advantage. This is after two negotiation sessions, which I wasn't allowed to go. I wasn't allowed to get any notes from it, so I don't know what had happened. So that's why, had my Sixth Amendment, my right to a fair and speedy trial, had that not been violated, I would have prevailed. I am certain of that. And then on top of that, there's a bunch of other facts that would have come out that the city attorney would not have wanted disclosed. So anyways, I've said my piece. I want to thank you all for at least considering this. I'm very dissatisfied with the results, and I will just kind of leave it at that.
Thank you. All right, so why don't we go ahead and reaffirm the limit for up to $10,000 for his attorney's fees, should he choose to submit a receipt for that?
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Okay, motion passes. I'm going to take a little bit of a break, if you don't mind. Take a restroom break.
Sure.
We'll be back in five minutes.
Reconvening the meeting, and we're moving on to item 10B. I spoke it over with the council. We have people here on item 10D. We're going to move that up just very quickly. It's a very quick item. I know you're all waiting for the St. Isidores, but this should go relatively quickly, and then we can get to you, okay? So we're going to address right now item 10D, and that is consideration of contribution towards Townsend Associates contract for continued advocacy efforts relating to the I-405 Improvement Project. And what I'll do is I'm going to have staff give a small report, and then we have two representatives from the agency that are going to come quickly and give us a breakdown of what they've done for us in the past, and then we can bring it back to the council.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and city council. This item is to consider reimbursement to Townsend Associates for work that they have done on the I-405 lobbying efforts that they have, their firm has been a part of. The main goal of Townsend has been to lobby OCTA, or the Orange County Transportation Authority, on behalf of corridor cities that are impacted and located along the I-405. Authority, on behalf of corridor cities that are impacted and located along the I-405 and impacted by potential expansion to provide coordination of preferred alternative number two, which has been no toll lanes and one carpool lane. There's three contracts that are on your agenda tonight for consideration. There has been an effort spearheaded by the City of Costa Mesa in which they had incurred $25,000 and had gone out and asked for reimbursement for all the other corridor cities. That was for a period of September 2012 through September 2013. There was another contract spearheaded by City of Westminster for a three-month period in the beginning of 2013. And then there's a contract on your agenda for consideration directly with Townsend for the period January through June 2014. All of those are $5,000 potential items and that's the fiscal impact that's included in the staff report is anywhere from zero if there's no contribution that the city council wants to do, all the way up to $15,000 if you wanted to be a part of all three of those agreements.
Great.
And that concludes the staff report.
Okay, I'm going to just give a real brief, I brought this item forward, so I just want you all to be aware that my intent was never to back pay for the other contracts, was just to see if we could do our fair share moving forward. I did talk with Cory earlier today and asked her for the sheet of paper that she gave us, which is a very quick breakdown, shows you by date what was done, and I think it makes it a little easier to disseminate than the large amount of papers that we have for the agenda items. So I'd like to invite Townsend to come up and give us a little breakdown of what we've done.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the City Council, I'm Cory Williams with Townsend Public Affairs and I'm here with Christopher Townsend, President of Townsend Public Affairs. I'll walk you quickly through this timeline and then we can help answer any questions you have that have been going on since September 2012. In September, City of Costa Mesa, as your city manager mentioned, brought us in to help fight the toll lanes on the 405 freeway. At this time, the vote at OCTA was set for September 24th, so later that month, so we had a really quick window to work with OCTA and get our strategy underway to fight toll lanes on the 405 freeway. We were able to get that first vote postponed, which gave us a little bit more time, which brings you to the October 22nd date. And at that board meeting, we, we were successful in rejecting toll lanes, alternative three, which is the toll lane option by OCTA, was voted down. And instead, the OCTA Board of Directors voted to move forward with alternative one, which is one general purpose lane in each direction on the 405 freeway. Come November 2012, we had an election. We had 10 out of 17 OCTA board members change over, so we had a huge education process that had to move forward with the 10 brand-new members who weren't around for the year prior where this discussion had been brought up. Working with OCTA, talking to some people behind the scenes, we kind of expected this vote to be brought back. We knew it wasn't going away. So working with all the corridor cities, they'd asked us to put together a proposal extension in January, and that one was run through the City of Westminster. They took the lead on that proposal extension. On your schedule, you will see March through September. I only listed a few of the OCTA board meetings. With every OCTA board meeting, there were highway committee meetings at OCTA. There were many more meetings that are listed on this schedule. We played a role in all of those, working with the corridor cities, helping to draft talking points, briefing OCTA board members, making sure everyone understood our side and where the corridor cities were coming from. In April, the high occup, high occupancy vehicle HOV degradation study was presented to OCTA. This is a study that the federal government imposed. It state, it has requirements on it for how HOV lanes need to move on a freeway, and this is kind of governing what any expansion project will need to do in order to make sure that there's enough throughput on any given freeway. Once we had that study, we, you know, we know we needed to kick up our advocacy efforts a little bit more. We put together a town hall forum in October. I know Councilmember Kusamoto was there, Mayor Mahia was there. We had a huge amount of press. I believe you have a copy of this press packet, but this gives you a glance of all the media attention we had from that town hall meeting. And we put this on in anticipation of the OCTA board voting on this decision again in November of 2013. That November item was continued to December. In the attachments to that agenda item, there was a detailed description of how OCTA was planning on implementing a larger toll policy. They wanted a list from the corridor cities of projects that would be used with the excess toll revenues. All of this toll speak was being done even though the locally preferred alternative was still alternative one, which was one direct, one general purpose lane in each direction. There was still no, no official vote for a toll lane. So in December, that vote came up again. Again, the OCTA board voted down the toll lane option and moved forward with alternative one. That decision in December was sent to Caltrans. Caltrans has to ratify that decision and that's where we are in the process right now. We're waiting for Caltrans to come back with their decision. We expect that decision to come out this summer. Initially, we expected it about a month ago, but that's been delayed a little bit. We expect that Caltrans will come back and say alternative one is not good enough, so we expect the toll lane option to come back on the table. So that's why we're here in front of you today. The cities have asked TPA to take the lead on this, this next contract extension, which is why you see us here in front of you today, since the first two were run through, City of Costa Mesa and City of Westminster, respectively. So hopefully that gives you a little bit of how we got to here, and I'm happy to answer any questions on what we've been doing since September 2012.
Can you expound, we, Cory and I spoke earlier today, thank you, this is exactly what I was hoping for, to break it down very quickly. My hope was that because we hadn't contributed in the past, that since this would be the last contract that would be drawn up, that the $5,000 would be a one-time investment in the protection of the corridor for ourselves. So that was what I was hoping to get support for here. We've, we've been benefiting from Townsend without paying our fair share, and I'm not looking to go back retroactive, but I would like for us to seriously consider this $5,000 because they have also worked with Alan Mansour to come up with legislation that would force it to go to a vote of the people, which would have to be ratified by a two-thirds vote, I believe is what it was. The first round of that was very telling. There was 10 abstentions, I believe, two for, four against, and then 10 abstentions, or is that in the reverse?
That's correct.
So I think that people are realizing that these toll lanes are not something that the people want, and if we're going to tax them above and beyond, we have our gas tax, we have our measure M2, which we self-impose, and now they're going to charge us to use those lanes that we've already paid for. And John Morlock coined this, I have to give it to him, he said, "That's like highway robbery." And so it's, it's funny, but it's not funny because it's, in a sense, taxation without representation and it needs to go to a vote of the people. So they've been very effective in helping stave off this alternative that we don't want, and I would just encourage the council to seriously consider this. Anyone else?
I'll go. So I want to thank you for being here and just for clarification, I know that as Mayor Gramahia said, we did not agree to participate when Costa Mesa first engaged your services, nor, I think we were aware that Westminster had actually had gone and hired you. But I think, if I understand and the clarification you provided, this is the going-forward kind of tasking and you were going to each of the corridor cities doing the same thing?
Correct, each city individually.
Yeah, and then how, how has that been going for you? Do you have a, kind of, the results of that?
So far, we have $5,000 pledges from four out of the six cities.
Okay, okay. And I, and I have to say, I guess I'm going to be very supportive of this, you know, going forward because I did see the good work that, that your company, your, your firm has done, and I know that you, you're kind of corralling all these different elected officials plus all the other appointments around. And over at Westminster, Diana Carey was pulling all of us together and it was sort of chaotic, but I do appreciate that everyone had a chance to talk and, you know, certainly speak up about the, the views on the toll lane. But, but I do thank you for that and I will be supportive of this.
All right, anyone else?
Yeah, Councilmember Kusamoto, supportive of this means just the $5,000 at the end or the $15,000 in total?
The $5,000 at this point, so, yeah.
Okay, a little bit of history, kind of, this has been something that we've supported collectively as an entire council. Actually, it started with me being a part of that, that group back in when I was the mayor in '12, then Warren in '13, and now you. You know, I, I guess I have a little bit different memory is that I, I've been working with Chris and his team since 2012 and a part of that group, when it was Gary Miller, myself and a couple of folks. Tina was not on the council yet in Westminster and then Costa Mesa was very, very vocal. And, you know, and I know at that time, Costa Mesa took it on and said, you know, "We'll worry about paying later." So I, I think, I'll just tell you from my perspective, I felt that we were in, we just had a free ride at that, and whether that's right or wrong, I, I was aware that somebody was getting paid. So I, you know, I, I am actually open to looking at the entire period. I, I don't know, Warren, from your perspective, that you knew Townsend was involved in your year of, of carrying this for the city, or were you not aware of that?
I wasn't aware of all the, I guess, the commercial agreements, contractual agreements between Townsend and the other cities, but I, I do recall when this came up, when, I'll say, I think it was one of the council members at Costa Mesa, may have been Ringheim, kind of, kind of really had a very strong reaction. I, I remember you said, "Let's not jump into this." I think we were very cautious about that because we weren't sure, we didn't want to get dragged into something that might have been just a, a money pit, right? That was my, my recollection of this. So I, I think that, again, going forward, fine, I don't know that, I guess, and not to Townsend, but maybe the city manager, has Costa Mesa and/or Westminster been asking us to provide any funds to offset their contribution or their-
No, I'm not aware of any invoice. We have not received an invoice from either of those two at this point.
But I don't know, are you aware of anything, Troy, where they've been asking?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
I'm not, that's a good point. I, I would just say, just in my closing comments, I would be open to all three because I do think that they did the time, but I understand what your perspective is. Thank you.
Richard?
I'm going to take a different approach. I'm willing to consider this, but I object to it be considered outside the budget process. We're right in the middle of the process and this should be put in the mix with everything else where we have to make a decision, not just a standalone $5,000 yes or no. This $5,000 or $15,000 means that something else does not get funded, in my mind. And I think that the proper place is in the next budget, budget discussion, because we're going to talk about, in the next budget, in the next budget discussion, we're going to talk about other extensive use of Townsend for the base, and I would rather see it rolled into that conversation. But I'm very open to the discussion.
Dean, anything?
Well, I wasn't on council when this got started, number one. Number two, I believe the intent of the council was to show support for neighboring cities and not commit to money. That was the original intent. I think it's a stretch, a big stretch, to consider us a corridor city. We're not. We're impacted, obviously, by the freeway and things that happen, but we're not really a corridor city unless you take the four, or the 605 somewhat into consideration. You know, the, the staff report and the backup information is asking for back payment on stuff. There's really no proposal here in terms of going forward. And, and I, I tend to agree with Richard. I think there's issues that we need to address from the standpoint of council, policy-wise, on funds that are being expended. You know, the, the matter somewhat has been taken out of OCTA's hands with Caltrans, who's yet to make a decision, and the general, the general word out there is Caltrans is going to do what Caltrans wants to do, to heck with the cities. And, you know, I don't know, that Townsend has the ability to impact that. Mansour's bill, you know, he's, he's in office until December, and whether or not he's able to get that part through before he leaves, you know, I'm not sure at this particular point, but I'm, I would be cautious about looking into the future until some of those issues are resolved or, or defined in that particular process.
Well, do you want to ask them, they are standing right here, if you have any questions, you can ask them directly?
No, I mean, I'm, I'm fine. I mean, I've read, I've read everything, including the contracts that they proposed at this particular point and, and, you know, I, I think, I, I go along with Richard. I think it's premature for us to commit to anything. I'm sorry I disagree with Councilman Edgar that it, it's going to go back for three, you know, invoices that they've invoiced us for when that was never intended or was never the part of it. So, you know, I'm, I'm ready for whatever action you guys want to take.
Okay, well, I'd like to ask them, Troy, real quick, when is the due date for the next payment? I mean, it's already been a couple of years that we haven't paid our fair share.
Christopher Townsend, the President of Townsend Public Affairs, yeah, I would like to clarify the, the payment situation. When we were brought in with the contract that was administered by the City of Costa Mesa, we were fully paid. So we are whole under that contract. I don't know the exact details. What's represented to me is they were going to, the Costa Mesa folks were going to reach out to other folks and some people gave them money and some didn't. And not to be dismissive of them, that's, that's not our problem.
Right.
We're fine. Similar situation with Westminster. They paid us and we're whole, we are whole with the City of Westminster and us, the coalition, for that level of work. Was it Adolfo, was it? Adolfo was the, the traffic engineer at the city. I know it was supposed to be in point about what they were doing, passing the hat around. Again, some cities contributed, some didn't. Doesn't affect us. What they've asked for this, this round is, Christopher, why don't you guys just corral the cats, you pass the hat around, you know, and so that's what we're doing and four of the cities are in, you'll be the fifth, and the one that's hanging out right now is, is Costa Mesa, because they were a little chapped, I think, that they hardly got anything from, from the first round. But I think, I'll hammer a number, we'll see.
Yeah.
But that's the fairness of the question asked. I would comment on the status of the process. We've worked, the coalition, we've come up with, we call another alternative to roll it. I believe that alternative needs to be rolled out immediately because I anticipate, as we've discussed, Caltrans will then come out with it they want to push, which will be alternative three, which requires tolls, and OCTA does not have to accept that. Remember, OCTA is the one paying for it. So if OCTA ain't paying, Caltrans ain't playing, as I like to say, there's, there's no way to go ahead. So I think it's critical for us to make sure we nip that in the bud. We know through sources that when there was a meeting and we have feedback that the meetings have not gone well with Caltrans, just trying to sell them on option one, as we all admit, Caltrans is saying that's insufficient. It's sucking it up on, will OCTA be able to pull off doing toll lanes or just have to do another option, which is add a general purpose, either add two general purpose lanes or add a general purpose lane and another HOV two lane to satisfy the federal requirement, which is, that second one is the second option, which we know Caltrans likes.
Uh huh.
And it's just a function of OCTA whining about, do we have enough money left from M2 to pay for it, which is really, in my mind, where this is all at. But the politics have been to make everybody kind of run away now that we've exposed the toll lane plan and everyone's running for cover to force it. So I actually think the timing is relevant now. We have other acts to pull, acts to grind on Caltrans with a couple of members of the Assembly who sit on the Transportation Committee. So it's a little, it's a little different situation, but I do think it's timely and hence why we're here. But I want to make it clear about whatever burden you are creating for us or what we thought we, we're not here to get past payment. That's a relationship between the city and the other cities on that part.
Perfect. What I'd like to do is remind the council that the interim finance director said that we have increased our surplus significantly and that, if I understood him correctly, Brett, that there's still more money coming in that could increase that even further. So, go ahead.
Yeah, we, the budget update that we just did, that we have, from the last budget workshop to the, to this one, our estimated fiscal year 13, 14 surplus has gone up, mainly due to an analysis of revenues through April. So we do have that information on 13, 14. We do have a gap heading into 14, 15, and those are the two that we're dealing with right now, the estimated surplus in the current year and the budget gap heading into next fiscal year.
But isn't there, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. Isn't there a potential for the surplus to grow even now, between now and the end of the fiscal year?
Well, the snapshot in time, we've tried to estimate what we think it will be right now.
Entire time, okay.
I mean, there, there's always a chance to grow or, or come short of that, but we're just, the snapshot is where it is, where we think it will be right now.
Okay, well, because this is time-sensitive, I'm going to throw it out there, I'm going to make a motion to go ahead and pay this one-time fee of $5,000, and then, as Richard said, look at it more closely with the items that we'd like to address with the base moving forward.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye? All opposed?
No.
Okay, so we have it passes three to two. Thank you for coming. Thank you for doing the additional work, and thank you for the great work you've done to help us fight those toll lanes.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to move back to item 10B, which is consideration of remote caller bingo. Can we get a staff report?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council, this item. We're bringing this item to you tonight to, we've had a proposal sent to staff, and we wanted to bring it to the council's attention and get direction from the council about whether or not you want us to move forward. And we've tried to provide an analysis initially of costs that would be incurred if we go further with this project. Stephen Mendoza, the Community Development Director, will give a staff presentation on this item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council and members of the audience. In 2008, the state legislature passed laws permitting local governments to allow what's called remote caller bingo. Our code already allows bingo, but it doesn't allow remote caller bingo. In order for this use to be allowed in Los Alamos, our laws must be changed. And that would be a Section 5 of the municipal code. And then also, if council was interested in going this direction, we would also recommend corresponding zoning code amendments to go with it, to maybe put some regulations on where and how. The city has been approached by Ms. Shelley Green of Bingo Innovations of California, a charity management company who works exclusively with California nonprofits. She has been, she has contacted the city on behalf of St. Isidore, which is our historical plaza charity here in the city. Amendments to Los Alamos Municipal Code require review and approval of the city council. If we were to do an amendment of Section 5 of our code, it would be the city council. If there were corresponding amendments in the zoning code, it would involve the Planning Commission and then the city council. And the Planning Commission would act as advisory for you on the zoning part of it. Remote caller bingo, for the audience's sake, is defined by a game of bingo. It's a game of bingo which has, which the numbers and symbols on the randomly drawn balls are announced by a natural person present at the site in which the live game is conducted. And the organization conducting the bingo game uses audio and video technology to link any of the in-site facilities for the purpose of transmitting the remote caller of a live bingo game from a single location to multiple locations. And therefore, the pot is bigger, or the pool is bigger, because multiple people are playing against that pool. The audio and video technology used to link the facilities may include cable, internet, satellite, and broadband, or even telephone technology. Because of the large number of players and allowed to participate and larger prizes awarded, remote caller bingo allow organizations to raise more money than traditional bingo does. It allows for that bigger pool. In light of the large number of players permitted by state law at one remote caller location at one time, staff is sensitive about just allowing a blanket approval for remote caller bingo anywhere in the city. We think there should be corresponding zoning code amendments to decipher where is the best locations to allow it, and also the possibility if council agrees that a conditional use be imposed, and the Planning Commission review each use before they're allowed to do it there. We're just playing it safe, but certainly council has the discretion of going in either direction. With that, one of the things that we always want to make sure is staff, is that we're going in a direction that council wants us, that we're spending our time and our resources on something that council supports. And so, we wanted to bring this to the attention of city council before we put any in-depth work into it. And with that, I'll turn that back over to the city council. There's estimates in the staff report of how much time we think that would be taken to address these issues and present both the Planning Commission and the city council with some recommendations from staff.
Thank you. Great staff report. If you don't mind, can we go out to public comment? That way, we can hear from the key players. We're going to go ahead and open public comment. Please state your name for the record.
Bruce Murphy, the President of St. Isidore's Historical Plaza. I read Stephen's report, and the, there is a litmus test for this, for an organization such as ours, by, from the state, that is very stringent. So, you can't just start a nonprofit so you can do bingo. They won't allow you to do that. Our facility maximum is not going to be 125 people. We can't have more than that, just by fire code. So, the issue of 750 wouldn't, obviously wouldn't apply to us. I think that this process for us is a means, as you know, we just recently closed escrow on St. Isidore, and we've also incurred now a mortgage. So, this is one of the key methods that we have to pay that back as quickly as we can. It is a 30 due in five years, so we really only have five years to clear that. This is one of the items that we're hanging our hat on as far as paying that mortgage, now as quickly as possible. Again, we've already, on Wednesday, we will finish signing the papers for the state to approve us. We can't do anything, obviously, until the city passes an ordinance that would allow us to do it. The original, the ordinance you have in place is for the, just to call locally, and it was used for years. But new center used to very well with that until you had your casinos open. And the pots were so much bigger, those, all those bingo games died off. You just can't compete. This is a method for us to be able to compete with the casinos as far as the pots, so that we can attract people to the bingo. Any questions that I can answer?
Any questions, Dean?
How is the Hawaiian Gardens bingo facility going to impact you, or do you anticipate fallout from them opening within their sphere, basically?
You only have one week, one day a week on Tuesday that we can do this. So, I'm not sure what theirs is, but I'm sure it's not one day a week. We can only have three games on that day. Again, we'll only have 125 people. As far as impacting them, I doubt that they'd even notice. I would suspect that they weren't happy that this was passed. Of course, that's 125 people, they could have go to the casino. But the fact is, it is passed. As far as any us drawing from there, I couldn't answer that question. I don't believe that would really be an issue, because people, I don't know if people just go there to play bingo. I find that hard to believe, but it could be, I guess.
Anyone else?
Is this the only company that does this?
No. There are several. This is the one I felt the most comfortable with when I talked about the way they presented. This program just got re-instituted to the state April 22nd. It was stopped for a couple of years because it was, apparently, they needed to clean up some of the legislation. It had 20 holes in it. So, it just started again, but there are another, other companies out there that do They charge different rates, so we felt this was one that worked already with people we could talk to.
The reason I ask is, I guess, to sound some factual inaccuracies in their, in their presentation, not in yours, so please, I'm not, I just, several, you know, I've discovered personally that when I don't understand the product, when they don't tell me the truth about the things that I do understand, that's not a real good sign. I do support your project, so please understand that. I just want to see it run as well as possible.
I, I'm not aware of any inaccuracy, so...
Maybe the two of you can get together and he can share that with you.
Yeah, I think that might be a good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything? Okay.
So, thanks, thanks Bruce for being here. Thanks Stephen for the report. So, before you sit down, so the question I have, though, so along Mayor Proton Murphy's questioning about other companies, so, does the language proposed in this ordinance kind of restrict you to this company? So, it's just a question to consider.
Well, we have to sign a contract. It's a five-year contract that...
Understand, but...
It says that we can't go to another company.
But that's, that's a, that's a deal between you and the, I'm just saying that if this is considered by the council and passes, does it kind of just restrict you to one? And that's, I don't think any of us up here would want, right? That you're free to go with, or whoever else would be free to go to whoever they would choose, so...
No, there's other choices.
But I want to make sure the language isn't restrictive, that you can't go to some of the other choices. You know, in the ordinance, the proposed ordinance...
On your ordinance, I thought it was in our contract.
No, 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 your contract, your contract. But I'm saying, what we're going to act on, right, is a potential change to the ordinance. And certainly, we would not want that to be restrictive of you or anybody else that kind of forces you into one solution. So, I would guess, then, looking at staff here, so, is there a, I don't know, I guess we have to kind of go and see where the council goes, but how this is worded and the change? Because if it's, if you're being, I'll say, provided as Mayor Proton Murphy has said, some information that seems to be factually incorrect or maybe not easily understood, then I think we would want to have that looked at, which would then unfortunately drive probably the costs up a little bit more on the ordinance, but I don't know, looking at, no, would it be included?
No, we have not begun any research, and whatever research we will have, we will make sure we have an ordinance that is acceptable to us, not necessarily a blanket ordinance off a shelf.
Okay.
Yeah, we've included that in the estimate.
Okay, thank you. So, that'd be my...
I think she proposed what other cities have done.
Right.
But not saying this is, go ahead and pass this and we're done, although she might like that. But I'm, that's not the way she approached us.
I see. And then, just kind of in, you know, general terms, that if this were enacted and you're able to go and have this fundraising opportunity, will it be sufficient to service the debt that you have? I don't want to get into numbers, but it's kind of, kind of give a sense of where things are.
Well, if you sign up, it will.
Yeah. Yeah, if you go, we will.
That's right.
This is one of many things that we do. And without this, we would still service the debt. But would we have to refi at the end of five years? Probably.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Redger, anything?
After public comments, I'll make a couple.
Do we have any other speakers that would like to come forward? No? Anyone? All right. Closing public comment. And we'll bring it back to the council. I do have one question. I actually talked to you about this, and you already had the idea, so I think it's great that you're moving forward with it. I was in charge of the bingo for the high school, and we tried to make some, you know, inroads here in the city, so I'm glad that you're, you know, getting some support. I'm glad to see that. One thing that I do have a question on, and I'm not sure how to tell what page it is, if you go and it says Chapter 5.16 Bingo at the top, oh, I'm sorry, Page 3 of 6, up in the right-hand corner. When you scroll down to past E, it's 5.16.090 Bingo Game Prizes, and it says it can't exceed $250. So, would you fall, would your payouts, I mean, from what I was thinking I was understanding is your payouts would be larger, is that correct?
Yes. And I, I'm sorry, I don't know the figure. Shelley's supposed to be here, and she had said another...
Okay.
I thought it was $750 per game was the maximum that they...
Well, this says 250 cash or in-kind. And I only know that because I brought to the city council, trying to help the high school, a specific game, and it was not allowed because it paid out 250, 250. It was, call it 1199 or something like that, and it wasn't permitted. So, I'm just saying, if we're moving forward with this, we need to make sure we address everything, so we're not in any kind of violation of our own code.
As I understand it, remote caller bingo has a higher limit, that's the 750.
Okay, so...
The attraction is we can compete with casinos. It's the same, whatever their figure is.
Right. And I think that's wonderful. That's kind of what we were trying to do, just through a different game without the remote caller. So, as long as that's addressed, I'm good with that. Did you hear any kind of a negative input on this in other cities? Because you said it was just brought back in April.
Right.
Do we have anything to be worried about that you've researched and know about?
It's, literally, it's less than a month that it's been going on. It's only once a week for everybody, the same day, of course. I, there's no one to talk to about it yet.
Okay.
If it brings in issues. They have a lot of rules about alcohol, which isn't permitted and other things. So, I can't answer that question. At this point, there's just nothing to support that there's. Now, if there was prior, I don't know.
Okay. And we're at the same place you are, where we're looking at it, it looks like a great idea, but we have to consider all the ramifications and all the benefits, too, to you. So, those are just a couple of the questions. Councilman Redger, did you want to speak now?
Sure. I just wanted to disclose to the community, I'm a member of St. Isidore, and I was at the presentation that Shelley had made to the board and actually participated in the vote to bring it to the city. I would also explain that my involvement was to talk with Shelley, hook her up with Stephen and Brett, and then be very careful to back the heck out of it until staff gave the presentation to the city council so that I wasn't starting work. And so, Stephen did his job, he was a gatekeeper, and as you can tell, he even admitted I did not do anything, and that was true. So, thanks, Stephen. Anyway, you know, I also asked the city attorney before this meeting if I have the ability to vote on this, and the answer is yeah. So, I will say that I'm fully supportive of this. I think that handling the finances and the negotiation with the diocese, with Bruce and the team, is that this, this is one of a couple of different really critical things for St. Isidore. And as a council unified, we've gotten behind that, you know, that organization and really tried to help them, even constructively, has taken it to the ballot of the people. This is really important, and that five years, the 30-year due in five, is a cliff. And the financing that's focused for St. Isidore, really, if they, if they aren't able to bridge that gap, they, they have some pretty significant land restrictions that they're not out of the woods, and all the money that the community's put into that building, after the five years, the church could end up taking the property back through the financing deal. I can't think of a more critical thing, and being a part of it for a short amount of time as compared to all these folks that have worked so hard. You know, this was a very creative idea. I think that if you look through the, you know, the bingo history of Los Alamos, the youth center used to be a big deal. I will also say, to answer a question on a business case for this, I have a building in Cypress where my office is at, where downstairs, they actually leased out the entire building bottom for, for all the boosters for the sports, for Cypress. And on the nuisance factor, I would tell you, it's pretty constrained to, at the front door, a lot of congregation, people get very active in wanting to come early to prepare, and so we had to, and they were very friendly, we were able to put time limits on it. Things like smoking, stuff like that, that was kind of tough when you're running a professional business, you don't like walking through the fog. But this is all self-contained within St. Isidore, it has a capacity constraint. The interesting part is they're also constrained with the number of people. They, they raise unbelievable amounts of money that I, just because of the, you know, property management and what they talk about, and it is a great benefit, and it's kind of self-contained. My question, Stephen, for you, now that maybe you can answer, would be, in the city, you talk about if we have to send it to have the zoning dealt with, you know, let's look, two or three chess moves in, we get it passed, and we don't do that, and then stuff starts popping up all over, and you got real competition. You know, we probably should be thoughtful of that, but then what does that add to the timeline for St. Isidore? Because there's a point where they're going to vote on something and contract, and contract us for five years, but the planning process and the zoning process could take months.
Yeah, absolutely. It could take 60 days before it comes back to the city council with a recommendation from the Planning Commission of zoning laws related to bingo.
So, a fast-track, well, now I'm going to be like Richard, I'm not, I hate, I'm going to say this, but spot zoning or something like that, this being authorized, is there a possibility of a conditional use permit for that one site called St. Isidore Parcel for this, or when you pass this ordinance, it's citywide, and the gloves are off, and anybody can go anywhere?
Realistically, there are certain things that could be in the municipal code without being in the zoning code.
Okay.
But zoning code is your legislative tool, your legal tool, that authorizes of where, how, and conditions of approval. If you wanted this to go, if you wanted this such a use to be able to pop up in a vacant 7-Eleven, then you wouldn't want it addressed in the zoning code. If you wanted to make sure it didn't pop up in those kind of areas, you would want a corresponding legislation in the zoning code, saying that it's a conditional use here, it's not permitted here, it shouldn't be allowed in the retail zone, and maybe you do want it allowed in the community facility zone, which is CF, where the churches are and what St. Isidore is. There's a complimentary zone where maybe you find it acceptable for these types of uses by charities to be. for these types of uses by charities to be. Without addressing that in the zoning code, you couldn't do that. Am I right, Carrie? Just making sure I'm not straying too far away from the law. So there is definitely a link to the zoning code. Yeah, it puts time in. The Planning Commission can be directed to meet swiftly. They can be, have special meetings. There are other ways to facilitate a speedier process.
So let me just make sure, so St. Isidore is in that, it's considered community, is like church.
CF, yeah.
CF zoning. You know, the community center here, very similar type of situation, right? So places where that would happen, or could happen, or have happened in the past, is that zone?
Yeah, the safest zone, without delving too much into it, would be the CF zone.
Yeah.
Because that's where like-for-like types of charities are and uses are.
Okay. But the fast-track, you would still have to take it to the Planning Commission to coordinate off into that zone?
Yeah.
Okay. And, you know, to offset what I, I'm wondering if Rich is going to talk about in a minute, is his concern about the money or the funding. We're doing a budget process right now going through. So I'm just curious, the amount that you've estimated here for the staff time is just an estimate, correct?
It's a pretty good estimate. I worked with Carrie on his possible time in it. You know, staff will do most of the legwork. Usually, when we draft an ordinance, we draft about 95% of it before we send it to the city attorney for his time.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have the city attorney start from scratch.
Also, and I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Also, the costs of regulation can be recovered as a fee imposed against proceeds. It used to be that people thought that you couldn't do it. There was a court of appeal case in 1990-something, 96 maybe, that said that a city that imposes costs that are estimated to be the actual law enforcement costs and so forth, even though, even as a percentage. In that case, it was a county imposed a percentage fee on bingo proceeds. And that was affirmed and declared not to violate the California Constitution.
Then I would say that, just from my case study in Cypress, they have a private security company that, you know, handles the door and the parking lot. I've never seen the Cypress PD over there. So again, I would balance it. And it sounds like the business proposition is potentially, what do we do upfront, which is the cost to potentially recover the initiation, and then the ongoing or maintenance cost. I guess that's a, we're not sure that's real. But it's, I guess, something that gets dealt with. Where in the process does that get finalized? Right now?
Well, one of the recommended actions is if council was interested in accepting a deposit to process such a thing.
Didn't we?
Go ahead. I'm done.
Didn't we do something similar where there was an estimate, the police services, that was required to be deposited? I'm trying to think of what it was, but I know there was a thing involving the police. I don't think they moved forward with it, but I remember something.
It was the pawn shop, and it was the fees to put the pawn shop and do the, but that's a totally different situation. But yeah.
You know, if we were to just do a straight zoning, I'm sorry, yeah, zoning amendment, it's a $1,600 fee that the council adopted in 2008. That was your fee set based on a study at that time of what you thought was acceptable to charge somebody for a zoning code amendment. This is a municipal code amendment, and I know that doesn't make a lot of sense of how different it is. But I don't have a fee I can charge for a municipal code amendment. But a comparable fee is $1,600 for a zoning code amendment. It doesn't cover to the extent of what we placed in the staff report. That's a $3,695 estimate.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. So do we have a motion to go with the recommended action for staff?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to support staff's recommended action.
I'd like to ask, when is our next special meeting scheduled for? Is that June 2nd or 6th?
The one that, if needed?
If needed.
The next one is June 2nd, yes.
Okay. So can I ask you all, would you be comfortable with us carrying this to the second meeting, just for us to do some research on it, so we feel okay on it? Are you opposed to that? Because there's, there's some questions that I have that I'd like to call a couple of different cities, and I didn't have the opportunity to do that. So if you're not opposed to it, I support the idea. I mentioned it to you. I just want to make sure that we're protecting the city before we move forward. Okay, so.
It's okay with the maker of the motion.
I just wanted to ask them first before I even talk to them. Because if they needed to go forward with it now, then we would do that.
Well, if the president of the board is open to it, I'm not going to get overanxious. I would say you're blowing it, but.
No, you're not.
Come on, Bruce. Toughen up there. But I guess, you know, let's wait for a week. Jerry, the amount of due diligence, I very much appreciate the support. So whatever you need to figure out if.
I'd just like to make a couple of calls. And if it's not going to delay you significantly, then that would be great.
Doesn't this still have to come back to council? In other words, what this does is set it going to Planning Commission. It's still going to come back to us. So you could make your calls and make any modifications at that time.
But we just wouldn't start the staff, we wouldn't start the staff work until, if that's what the motion is.
If that's true, then wouldn't we, I'm not trying to go against where they want to go, but wouldn't we want to vote for it tonight? Because I couldn't get staff started until.
I'll second your motion.
Okay, thank you. You know what, though, Jerry? I don't want to leave you behind. I just, I'm just trying to find a way.
You can still make the phone calls, because it's not going to come back to us for final action for.
No, I know. But before I support it, as I said, I mentioned it to Bruce, it's a great idea. I want to make sure that I check to make sure that there are no negative impacts before I support it. And I want to support it. I just don't feel comfortable tonight to do that. So, but the other council members can vote, and I would hate to vote against you. That's not where I want to go. But there's a motion and a second to.
Is the motion for recommendation items one, two, and three? Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so opposed? No?
Well, okay, yeah. I think I understand where the mayor wants to go. So, yeah, it's a tough one. So you need to give me a chance to offer a substitute motion.
I didn't know that anybody was interested. Yeah.
It's too late. So I'll support it.
Okay. So passes for one. Thank you for coming. Thank you for waiting. I hope you understand my concerns, and it's not anything against St. Isidore. So I'm planning on coming there and playing bingo.
They'll bring your concerns forward, though. I mean, we.
I understand that. But we're already taking action. Congratulations to all of you. All right. Bingo! Now, we're moving on to 10C, which is a subject brought forward by myself, a discussion for park maintenance. And good staff report?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. The Community Development Director and Public Works Superintendent are, have put together the staff report based on the mayor's request for information. And they can provide a staff report now, and then we will seek City Council feedback.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Tony Brandeberry, since it's Public Works Week.
Thank you.
See what happens?
Yeah. Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, tonight, we are here to discuss some maintenance items at Lavertet Park, and also at some other parks within Los Alamos. Back on March 18th, the Public Works Department received a couple complaints about the condition of Lavertet Park. Those conditions were an inoperative drinking fountain, fencing that was in disarray, benches with some graffiti, and the playground wood chips condition. The inoperative drinking fountain was under repair at that time, and during the complaint, it was right during the middle of the repair. Since then, right at the time, the water department has turned on the water back to the drinking fountain, and it is optional, operational.
Great.
The fencing that was in disarray, we jumped on that right away and repaired the chain link fencing. And in your, the budget discussions, we do have some requests for some further fencing ideas that are coming forth to you in the budget discussions itself. The benches, we took the graffiti right away. And the playground wood chips, we had just finished our, our purchase of wood chips, and they were scheduled to be put in the following week. So we were right on top of it. When we talk about the playground surfaces, in your staff report, you'll see we have a chart here that kind of shows when the parks were in, date of installation of the playgrounds. When you put, when you change from wood chips to rubberized, the first thing you want to do is you want to look at the age of the playground structure itself. Common sense tells us if we're going to take the wood chips out, and we're going to put the rubberized in, you don't want to do that. And then two years later, tear it all up again and replace the playground. Okay, so just your information there, that's, like you say, Orville Lewis Park was installed in May of 1993, and so on and so forth. Currently, right now, to replace the wood chip mulch with the rubberized surfaces, you're looking on an average of $12 to $16 per square foot of the playground surf area, surface area, which comes up to about $33,600 to $44,800, depending on how, how involved the city council would like to be. You want one color, multi-colors, there's a lot of different options out there. Currently, we have been looking for grant opportunities right now. Director of Recreation, Corey Lakin, has been diligently looking, as far as myself. And we've, so far, we've found some grant opportunities for a 50%, 50% matching funds, which is, which is very good, given the economy right now.
Right.
Fencing. Right now, we're looking at, with the budget, we're looking at doing some fencing ideas. And we have a proposal for $16,000 for next year for fencing. It's not only at Lavertet Park, but we're looking at all the other parks. We're looking at open spaces, such as the, one area that Public Works doesn't like is the channel that is in the south, south end of the city, kind of between the Highlands and the mobile gas station in Seal Beach. We have to take it apart to service the channel. And we have some very, very talented individuals here that actually, we hand-built all the fencing that you see in the back around the police department area. So we have some very good talent that we can use for this kind of repairs. So just to put an idea in your, in your thoughts there. At this time, you know, staff is looking for direction on where you would like to go with this. And I can answer any questions that you may have.
Great. Well, I want to say, thank you so much for your speedy response to taking care of those issues. I wasn't made aware that the wood chips had been addressed. So how does that process work? How often do we trade those out? And I called him ahead of time, so you all know that I'm not trying to catch him off guard. How often do we exchange those, or do we mix them with the existing? What's the process?
Okay. So currently, right now, every month, we go out and do inspections on all our parks that have playgrounds. Okay. There is a certain level of wood chip mulch that we have to have in there for safe play. There is a chart in the manual, it's a fall ratio that says for how many feet, the height of the playground surface, you have to have so many inches of wood chip mulch.
Okay.
On all our parks, there's a little mark that, you know, you wouldn't see unless you knew it was there. But there's a mark that tells us how high to keep it. Okay?
Right.
On an average, we replace these wood chip mulch, or we add two, about once a year, on an average. Okay, now, Little Cottonwood Park is a little bit heavier use, so we'll add to that maybe every nine to 12 months. Kind of depends on the use of the park during that year.
Okay. Well, that mulch works, because my niece fell off of the apparatus flat onto her back, and she kind of bounced. So it did what it's supposed to. The reason I brought this forward is because we went over there with four of my nieces, my husband and I, we were playing. And we found that three of the six of us, because we were falling down and playing with the kids, ended up with splinters in our fingers. And I thought that was something that needed to be addressed. So when you address the wood chips over there, not just the height, but what about the quality that the wood chips are in? Do we have any kind of factor that we use before we decide to replace them? Any kind of formula?
You know, at this point, there's really no formula that I'm aware of. Corey, you can correct me if I'm wrong. But as far as, you know, are they deteriorated? Usually, as they deteriorate, the level deteriorates. And once it gets down three or four inches, we know that once you put the playground chips back in, that problem kind of goes away.
Okay. And so at Lavertet, we did add some? That's what you just said?
Yes. Yes, we added, I want to, don't quote me, but I want to say 43 cubic yards.
Okay, 43 cubic yards. Okay. Okay, so this is what led to my discussion during the budget, so that you all know that if we're going to look at replacing those chips, you can't use sand, because the cats use it as cat box. I know that from when I used to live over on Park Bar. The wood chips are not the best way to go. And I know that we're not looking for the premium parks. But I mean, for the parks that are utilized by the kids the most, I think that maybe we could focus putting a little bit more money into those, bringing them up to a standard. Now, Tony, in the staff report, it says it's average condition, the play apparatus over there. So are you saying that you wouldn't feel comfortable, if the council so wished, in putting rubberized product on the ground without replacing that whole playground piece?
I would feel comfortable with looking at the older parks to possibly replace, replace those. The newer ones, within 10 to 12 years, maybe upwards of 15 years, I would say, hey, let's go ahead. You know, I would give my recommendation for that.
Okay.
But I, just in the, in the terms of spending, spending the city's money wisely.
Right. Well, I know that, and I said this at the budget meeting, and I know you were there, so I don't mean to belabor the issue, but Little Cottonwood's gotten, I'd say, a great deal of upgrading to it. Laurel Park had, I think it was $280,000 to the refurbishment of it. And then Orville Lewis Park, we put in the new fence, we put the brick bottom so that the coyotes couldn't come under. We did the surface for the basketball courts. So what I'd like to ask for consideration moving forward is that we address those pocket parks. Because even though you may think that they're underutilized, as I said, and they are, a couple of them are in the apartments, and they are used pretty heavily. And the per capita there in, in the apartments compared to a residential neighborhood is very different. There's a lot more kids in that. And they don't have yards to play in. They don't have safe places to play. Many times, you'll see them playing in the street. So I think it's our obligation to make sure that there's a safe place for them to play. And, and so that's what I brought this item forward. So thank you so much for your quick addressing of those issues, Tony. And so that's just a receive and file. And we'll move on to our last item before we go into closed session, which is item 10E. And it's a discussion of waste hauler ordinance. And if we could get a staff report for that.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. This item was brought forward to staff and placed on the agenda at the request of Mayor Graham Mahia and Councilmember Kusamoto. The item is to consider the potential for a ballot measure requiring award of the waste hauler franchise to the lowest responsible bidder, or modification of the trash ordinance, or the possibility to take no action. And this is on item for discussion and providing direction to staff.
Right.
At this point.
Okay. I'll bring it back to the council real quick. I brought this forward because when we went through the whole fiasco of the trash lawsuit, there were several people that came to us and said, why don't you just put it to a vote of the people? So really, what we talked about was putting together a ballot measure to allow for the trash lawsuit, I'm sorry, the trash contract to go to the lowest responsible bidder. And if the council chose to go in a different direction, it would have to go to a vote of the people. That was what was brought forward. And, and so I will go ahead. And if the council would like to talk about it now, or I can open, open public comment, and then bring it back, what's your preference?
I'll go ahead and talk.
Okay.
So I also support this. And again, through all that mess of the trash lawsuit. I think the one thing is the, as I, I think when I had a discussion with city manager and city attorney, the ordinance that was written to go to the lowest bidder, which happened in the November 2008 time period, apparently, you know, the confusion on some of it was the, it pointed to a purchasing agreement ordinance that was not fully baked. So there was some confusion, and that caused, I think, some perhaps misunderstandings. But I think in this case, the clarification, I think, that I would like to see going forward, and it would be more akin to a public works type of a bid, where we actually pick the lowest bidder. And we use the two-step process, where we qualify all the bidders, and then have them turn and seal bids. And, you know, the lowest bid kind of wins based on the RFP that we would generate, the type of services we're looking for, and then qualifying the bidders, and then have them come back and do this. So that's kind of the process which I would advocate. And that's what was discussed with staff. So with that, back to you, Mayor.
Anyone else? Nothing? Dean? Okay, I'm going to open up for a public Okay, I'm going to open up for a public comment.
I have a question.
Okay.
About that trash contract that you have. Is that for three months, right, the trash con, that contract, between, between the trash and, is it for water, trash, or what? What was it, for three months? Every three months should be a bill, right?
That's the billing.
Oh, yeah, we're talking more, Ed, of the overall contract with the trash hauler to provide the overall services.
The, the, I'm asking you, is the trash bill has gone up quite a lot more than I expected it should have gone up. So I was just going to say, if one, one thing went up, my bill went up to about seven or eight dollars more.
Right.
Than it was before, and I don't, I don't put my trash out all the time anyways, because I don't, I don't have that much trash to put out anyway. So I was just curious why the trash went up that much.
Well, because in the contract, they were allowed through certain processes to increase, and that, there are a lot of contingent points, but that's why we wanted to make sure that we simplified the process. It was clean and easy, you qualify the bidders, and then it goes to the lowest responsible bidder, because during the lawsuit, the judge said that that's not considered a professional service agreement, trash, that trash haulers are not professionals, that when you talk about professionals, that would be like a city attorney, you know, an accountant, something like that.
What I'm saying is, the trash, what's it combined with, the trash and what else?
I think it's-
Just trash.
Just trash?
Mm-hmm. Used to be trash and water, now it's just bricks.
It's just trash.
Right.
And I, and I got a bill for, I think it was thirty-seven or thirty-eight dol, thirty-eight dollars, because less than that before.
Right.
I made about thirty-five or thirty-six.
Yeah.
Jacked up a little bit more, and I was just curious.
Right. Well, that's why we're trying.
I didn't like the lot of money, it's just, I was just, I was just kind of wondering.
Right. All right, well, good. Well, hopefully, we answered your questions.
Oh, you did.
Next speaker?
I just said-
Please state your name for the record.
J.M. Iveler. City Council. Joe Sloan of Sloan-Vazquez, before he was a consultant, wrote a document in which he described how you could avoid having the trash bid gamed. In that document, which we included, citizens included in their lawsuit, I believe, and made reference to, he stated that it's a two-step process. You determine who's the responsible bidder, and then you tell them, this is what I want. They tell you how much it is in a sealed bid, you open the sealed bids, and the lowest guy wins. Fortunately, when Joe Sloan and Sloan-Vazquez came in here, they decided that they were going to change that process, and they don't follow it, and they actually did exactly what they said they wouldn't do, which is they allowed subjective criteria to be used to determine that this was a better bid because they're subjectively better because they know the community, and things of that nature. It should be simple. It should be, are you capable of making the bid and doing the job? That's just a matter of whether or not you're able to get insurance, or whatever it is that we determine to define capable and responsible bidder. It should be simple. If you're the lowest bid, you win. The problem we have is that we treat residential and commercial differently, and therefore, lowest bid becomes dysfunctional. It doesn't work out. What's lowest for residential is the highest commercial in the county, or double what we were paying before in the case of Los Alamos. I fully support going back and rewriting the code in a way that is clear and concise, and does exactly what Joe Sloan's original paper said to do, which is to eliminate any subjectivity. This is the services we want, and whoever is the lowest bid wins. But I don't think we should only do it for trash contracts. I think we should write it out that any contract that the city has where it's over a million dollars, I think narrowing it down to just trash contracts is doing a disservice to the community. This is a way of ensuring that every bid we get over a million dollars, or whatever number you decide, gets done in a fair and equitable way, without subjectiveness, so we all know we're getting the best deal from somebody who can do the job. I'd be very supportive of our city council making sure that we never get gamed on a bid again. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on that item? Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the council. There was talk about the fact that there was an ordinance in place to go with the lowest responsible bidder. It was misinterpreted, and so it led to a lawsuit. So what we're looking for is to clean up the language, make sure it's not bid as a, what do you call it, a professional service agreement, and that it's bid as a Public Works contract, which in essence is a better fit for it. So, Richard, I know that you had some comments regarding this in the past. Do you have any feelings on this item?
No.
No? Okay. Anyone else? All right, so I'll make a motion to write an ordinance and potentially a ballot measure that would state that the trash contract would go to the lowest responsible bidder, and that if the council chose to go a different way, using the subjectiveness that Mr. Iveler just mentioned, it would have to go to a vote of the people by a majority vote in order for them to contract with another bidder that was not the lowest responsible bidder. Any seconds?
I'll go ahead and second that motion, but Carrie's kind of looking, is it, is it clear enough what, what the motion is?
You probably ought to get legal advice before you-
All right.
Do such a thing.
Really, I think the, okay, so if I may amend, I think it's to direct staff to look at crafting a ballot measure language to bring back to the council, to have us act upon that, to see if we can find some consensus on a ordinance to update the municipal code.
Okay. Looking at the municipal code as it currently stands, though, it says for residential refuse collection franchises, any such franchise shall be granted by the city council by resolution upon a determination that the public health, safety, and well-being would be served by the award of a franchise. Any such franchise granted by the city council shall be for a maximum period of eleven years. Don't think you would really want to require that a franchise be awarded to the lowest bidder, maybe the lowest responsible bidder, and maybe that was the intent. You certainly, because the lowest bidder could just be Joe Fly-by-Night, who comes in and says, hey, I've got a trash truck, I can pick up all of your trash in a matter of, you know, two days a week, whatever. You have to qualify them, certainly. So if, if the council is inclined to go in that direction, you know, certainly investigate what we can do and, and attempt to draft an ordinance, but, well, that's it.
Okay. So-
I've, I've got a question.
Sure.
So, is our current ordinance legal?
Yes.
When does the trash contract expire?
That's a good question. Trash contract says that it expires on December thirty-first-
Two thousand-
Sixteen. Two thousand sixteen. The council intended that it be a five-year contract, which would have expired December thirty-first, two thousand fifteen, but there was, there were some drafting issues, and I've already corresponded with and spoken with Consolidated about that. I informed them that it's the city's opinion, that it was a mutual mistake, and they disagree. They believe that it was a unilateral mistake on the part of the city, if any, and they are intending to continue enforcing their right to haul trash in Los Alamos until December thirty-first, two thousand sixteen.
Okay. And the item brought forward, Jerry, by you and Warren, to put this on, is to try to aim towards a ballot measure on this election ballot?
Mm-hmm.
So, it's two and a half years off. I guess, in the spirit of trying to work together, I don't know about you, but I'm, I'm not sure I want to live through another election about the trash, and I, you know, at some point, in the same essence and spirit, we've been trying to even work with the issue that Warren brought up earlier about his Brown Act issue, you know, at some point, we've got to kind of not try and test the relationship and see if we still have some fight in us. I mean, this was a very contentious item, and it, it almost seems politically driven right now versus a pragmatic issue that needs to be dealt with in a business sense if it's two and a half years out. I just don't see the sense of urgency, and I would just ask you respectfully of if, if, you know, if we really are trying to work together through this, let's settle this after the election. I mean, if this is something that needs to, to take, we've got three more elections until this thing actually gets done, and let's have a good, open discussion after that. But I mean, you know, we're trying to get through the financials right now, we're trying to learn to work together. This has been the longest stint since I've been on this council that we've been able to do that, and, you know, the Brown Act thing kind of pushed the envelope, and it took five meetings for us to, you know, we really didn't have it in us for different reasons. I was in there one, I totally get that, but I, I just, I'm not, it, it seems like we're pushing it a little bit, and I would just respectfully request that, you know, we would consider tabling this till, you know, sometime in the, you know, two thousand fifteen time period, but, but those are just my thoughts. Thank you.
Okay, well, in response to that, I appreciate what you're saying, and it's unfortunate that you jump to that it's political because it's not at all, but with the election coming up, Troy, there's no guarantee of the people who will sit on this council, and so, in the interest of trying to make sure that there are safeguards put in before maybe any one of the three of us is not here to do that in the future, it's different when you come up and speak at the podium, you don't have any kind of a control or a say. When you sit in these seats, you have more power when it comes to making those decisions. So, not political at all, honest to God, not political. Just trying to make sure that if this election doesn't benefit the three of us, that this is an item that was brought up during my tenure, and I said that I would address it, and, and that's why I'm doing it.
Okay. I, I, you know, I don't want to look too far back in the agenda, but it's, there's been a lot of issues and contention and things that have happened, things that people have said. We would all like to have the past kind of tidied up, and then looking forward to kind of be able to go and do something like this, but I mean, I could think of two or three things I'd like to try to drive, you know, to get through before, you know, if I don't run or am not elected in this next term, but I'm really trying to think of the greater good is, I, I really, for many years, we haven't been able to do anything as a council to get stuff done, to work together, and truly partner through this, and I think this just seems a little bit inconsistent with the spirit that we've tried to, to do, and I think we're just pushing it a little bit, but, like I said, I'll, that's my piece. Thank you.
I, I just would not, I, I'm not understanding, I guess, why this is being made to be something more than what it is. I think I explained to you that there's always the chance that we won't be here to be able to address it after this next election, and I believe that this is a real issue because we've had people dissatisfied, and there's always going to be people dissatisfied. That's nothing directed at anybody specifically, but I think the fact of the matter is, we do have a low rate for the residents and a very high rate for the businesses, and I've been, you know, I know you know a lot of people because of the chamber, but there are businesses that have reached out to me also to ask for help, and that's our job, that's what we're supposed to do. So, it's not controversial, that's not the point in it whatsoever. It's really just trying to make sure you take care of the best interest of the city. Warren?
So, if I may, Councilmember Egger, certainly, it's not, from my perspective, the political or aimed in that way, it's, it's really the timing issue, and, you know, it's unfortunate we didn't have a role, you know, time to discuss it when we look at the calendar and laying it all out, when we just passed the resolution about the upcoming November election. So, like the utility, telephone utility tax, we had to, you know, true up two years ago, there was a time crunch, and we just kind of hit upon that. So, apologize to you that, that was not meant to be, you know, pushing that edge, it really is a timing issue, and, and I think that if we delay till twenty fifteen, then it really kind of becomes, well, whoever's sitting here, right, to kind of take it up for twenty sixteen, because that'll be the next opportunity. It won't be, it won't be twenty fifteen, right? The next election will be the, the even number year. So, that, that's kind of where it is, so perhaps in, I, I'm not sure where you're at, but I would think that what we want to do up here is set the, well, maybe, it's, it's really come down to facts, data, numbers, figures in the decision that is made by this body on the next trash contract. I mean, Public Works, whether it's a intersection or sidewalks, it's, it's real simple and straightforward, goes to the lowest bidder. I think unfortunately, the way that this is, there is just a lot of subjectivity that can creep into it. I think we just take that out, then it makes our job a lot easier, and that's really what it was meant to do. And, and our job, but, you know, five years from now, or six years, whatever the ending is, it makes it, it makes it pretty clear, cut and dry, and, and then the influences that have happened in the past, that continue to happen in other cities, won't be, you know, as prevalent. They may still be there, but it won't be as prevalent. Now, I think you've brought up several times that the city of Irvine has a Evergreen clause that is baked into their ordinance that kind of ratchets them down, right? And at some point, they had to kind of, you know, I think, wave that, dangle that incentive in front of their trash haulers, too, knowing that when they get that franchise, when they grant that, then there's this, this, you know, clawback that can actually lower it. So, again, I apologize, it was not meant to push it, it really is the timing for us, and if there's no support for this, then it kind of dies right here, and I would urge the council, though, I, I'd say it's worth a look, I'm not sure what it would be in terms of staff time, I would imagine it'd be on the order of what we just passed for the remote caller bingo, on that order of a few thousand dollars to have the city attorney draft something, and I think we have the template of what was there from two thousand eight, and if it requires some significant rework, so be it, but I, I would just say for us, for, for our community, for our city, let's take this out of the equation, you know, for the future councils when they go through the election, let's, let's take that element out from them. So, with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second, and we're getting late, so we're going to go ahead and ask for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Oh, I'm sorry.
What's the motion?
Have the city attorney look at a ballot, ballot measure language to bring back to us and decide if we want to move on with it. I think that's really what it is. It's not put it on the ballot, bring it back here. Is that, is that clear, Carrie? Is that kind of, we need to see the language. So it's not put ballot, not put it on the ballot right now, it's bring back ballot measure language.
Right. Another alternative, of course, would be to just amend the ordinance, to do what you'd like to do.
But the ordinance can be changed, and that's what we're trying to safeguard.
We've got scars from that one.
Do you have any questions?
It seems like a big leap forward off, off a sentence that I actually have read a hundred times, and I don't actually even understand. This item is to consider the potential for a ballot measure requiring award of the waste hauler franchise to the lowest responsible bidder, comma, or modification of the trash ordinance, or take no action. What's the ballot measure?
Well, that's what we're asking him to take up, is to do the research and bring it forward.
Ballot measure that they're requesting would be to require that future franchise, trash franchises be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder, I guess.
Personally, I'd like to see a staff report with a conversation of the pros and cons of that before we, before we do this. This, this just, this obviously is the most divisive thing in the city, this contract.
Oh.
I mean, we fought over it since I started paying attention, and I just think we need more than we have here, and I, quite honestly, I don't see why it needs, why it needs to be a ballot measure, but I'm very willing to discuss that.
I think the ballot measure was to ensure that if we didn't want to go with the lowest responsible bidder, it would go to a vote of the people, and that was to ensure that we wouldn't have a repeat of what happened last time where there was an ordinance put in place, it wasn't interpreted that way, so it wasn't followed, it led to the lawsuit, and then the judge said that the ordinance was not followed, so then we changed the So we're looking for a way to keep that from happening in an attempt to not have that happen again. That- That's the intent. And I think the fact that it's time-sensitive is why we brought it forward now. It's not politically driven, it's just really kind of a cleaning up of language so that we can make sure that we're not paying a dime more than we have to, to get the same service.
Shouldn't we be having a discussion on what is a lowest responsible bidder before we ask the city attorney to write a contract, to write a ballot initiative? And how do you balance the residential versus commercial?
What do you mean, how do I balance it?
How do you, how do you balance, like, let's say now, I feel, as an example, any, let's say, citizen A feels that we have a pretty good contract on the residential side, and then not a very good contract on the commercial side. How do you balance those to determine who's the lowest bidder?
Well, I think you would try and find the lowest responsible or qualified bidder for both pieces of that pie. And if you go back to the old trash RFP, when we got those requests for proposals, and I didn't want to go into it in this depth, because then it does become something that's political, and that was not the intent, but there were other qualified bidders that worked in other cities or other counties that were more than capable, who came in at a lower bid for the same services. And so, what we're saying is, very, just in short, we're looking to get the most bang for our buck and not to cost our residents anything more than we need to, based on qualifications that are subjective. That's really it. I mean, I would imagine that it would be easy to qualify bidders, because there are several trash haulers that were out there that already are doing trash in other cities and other counties. So, I wouldn't imagine that they couldn't handle Los Alamos, which is like pretty much two square miles if you take out the base, so.
I would agree.
And the only reason I asked you is because in prior conversations, I thought that that was something that you were supportive of. So, my mistake in.
I have not said I support or don't support.
Right.
All I'm saying is, we're making a major move on a sentence. No staff report of any discussion of the pros and cons. And, I mean, this, look, look at this. It's two sentences, one of which is very run on and doesn't make sense to me.
I didn't write it.
Yes, somebody signed it. We can guess.
I signed it. I just intended to show the three options. They have been discussed tonight, but ballot measure, a modification of the ordinance, or no action. And that's just here for discussion only on this one. That's why there's no staff report.
Right. So, we're asking for direction, for them to do some research and potentially come forward with some language that we could then discuss.
Well, shouldn't we be discussing everything? Shouldn't we be discussing?
Well, that's the direction we could give them.
Okay. I mean, I think we need the discussion, and I think we need to have it laid out so clearly that, that there, you know what, nobody wants to go through it again. I think we can get unanimous agreement on that.
Amen.
So, let's figure out how we do that.
Well, what would you like to see? That way, maybe we can include that in the motion.
Right now, I'd like to see more. I don't know what more is, but I know that this is not enough, at least for me.
So, perhaps, it kind of seems that Mayor President Murphy, you're coming up with sort of a amended, or a substitute motion. I'm looking at the city attorney. Is it clear as to what would be, I guess, what needs to come back to us in order to, I'll say, have some thoughtful debate and consideration of going forward with a ballot measure, as opposed to coming right out with a ballot measure?
Is it clear or not really?
Okay. But, so, okay. So, at the end of the day, we want a ballot measure on the November election. That's the end of the day. How do we get there? What's the process? What are the points that have to be considered, debated, and voted upon by this body? That's really what we need. And, you know, I think that while some of us have lived through the ordinance that was crafted in November of 2008, and then awarded the contract by the council in 2010, and then sued and lost by the council in 2011, I think all that kind of lays out, right? And we want to avoid that. And so, that was the process in which we can avoid that. And if the ballot measure is not the right vehicle to do that, that'll be something that this body will decide. But as Mayor President Murphy says, there's not enough information here in order to direct you to come back with a ballot measure. So, I think it's really come back with a staff report that says, these are the options of a ballot measure. These are the things that we would need to do in terms of this body, the 300 and whatever, some word count ballot statement, right? All those elements that have to go in place.
And Richard would like to see the pros and cons, correct, Richard?
Well, the pros and cons of that, and the pros and cons of changing the city ordinance to, back to where it was before it was changed the last time.
Okay.
Maybe that, maybe that does it.
All right. So, you understand the motion, Troy?
Yeah. A couple of questions. Mathematically, staff, let's look at the reality. So, we're talking a ballot measure for November. A ballot measure to do anything, forget for a fact that, you know, that this ordinance is complex, forget for a moment that it, you know, that the original ordinance wasn't even complete, that's why we had to interpret it, and the interpretation was incorrect as deemed by the judge. And then he just said, fix it one way or the other, so we fix it, and clearly not satisfactory. And I'm open to have that discussion. But behind the, kind of the train schedule to the ballot, is a very substantive policy, ordinance, ballot measure, it has to be boiled up to 300 words. I mean, before we take the drive to Vegas but only have enough gas to get to Barstow, I'd just like to know, do, I mean, are we starting something that we're just never going to get there from here?
Time-wise, we're definitely pushed up against the deadlines that we would need to get a ballot measure on the November ballot. And we were prepared tonight to talk about, and we were talking about the budget gap closure measures, and one of the items that was on that list, the potential for a parcel tax, for example, we were prepared to talk about that timeline and what the steps were if we were going to go forward. Now, tonight, we, and not to put the city clerk on the spot, but we did prepare for the potential question, if you, just, you're asking now, what, given the fact that we don't have any direction to put a ballot measure on there right now, and if we're going to come back with additional analysis, if we do come back the next meeting, and maybe another meeting after that, how much are we pushed up against the wall for that meeting? There's an August drop-dead timeline. So Wendy has gone back and tried to back into that date, so at least she can initially give you a rough estimate of the timeline tonight.
Actually, I didn't have a chance to back up the dates exactly, but City Manager Plumley was correct. The absolute last day to call for a ballot measure is August 8th, so all council decisions would have to be made before that date.
Okay. So, I mean, just directionally, we are, by doing this, we really are setting our agenda for what we, I mean, this is going to be a major time consumption. So, I mean, we just need to realize that everything else that we've been focused on, you know, we were in the middle of two labor negotiations, we have a budget we're trying to find ends to meet, we've got a lot of priorities within the city. This thing, we're going to, and we've got a contract that's two and a half years out, but we're going to make that a priority and take up our legislative time now. I think, you know, a middle ground for me is, look, I'm supportive of evaluating the ordinance. Matter of fact, I'd make the motion, and I'm not making it yet, but I would make the motion that, you know, that we start work on the ordinance. And then we get to a point where through the ordinance evaluation, we decide either we are unanimous or not. And if we get, I mean, at that point, we would have defined the problems in the ordinance, what we want changed, then we hand that to the city attorney and say, put it on a ballot. I don't think we will do our right due diligence in the short amount of time to get through that with substance, and it will be done in haste like the first one was, where the city attorney at that time, BBK, did not get through the process to actually do it correctly. And so, I'm supportive of fixing the ordinance for the long term. I think it's a rush to get it on a ballot, and I, quite honestly, I don't think we have the time. And I think it's a bad use as a priority with all the other things that we finally are now starting to get up and going in the city and get stuff done. New city manager, full team, to make this our priority for the summer would be, I think, a missed opportunity for this council.
And I would just say, I'm not sure why we would be in opposition to hearing the voice of the people through a ballot measure as to the way they want this handled. It was very divisive, as you know. It split the community right down the middle, and that is the biggest regret I have for the entire seven years, seven-plus years that I've been here, is that that whole experience was devastating to this community. And so, I mean, I understand what you're saying, Troy, but I've already been clear about it. We may not all be here, we may not have the opportunity to weigh in on it, and I think that we were looking at potentially going through the same process for something that was on the budget for tonight, so I don't see why, if we couldn't, if we could finish that, why we couldn't finish this. And I just don't understand why we wouldn't want to hear the voice of the people when it comes to spending their money or charging them for their services. So, we have a motion, and Troy, you have a substitute motion you said you wanted to make?
I would make a substitute motion that we do the due diligence, that we begin in a more methodical way to evaluate the ordinance, look for the areas of opportunity. I think the council's been pretty unanimous on getting away from a weighted factors issue to a lowest responsible bid, and then bring that back and work through that. And, you know, I'm not against seeing how long that would take to do it right, so that whatever we could eventually take to the people or serve up is done correctly, but I would bet that that will take a substantial amount of time. And that's me trying to meet halfway to say, you know, let's do some due diligence. But I think to try to go the full leap into the ballot measure, I think that would be a tough one. So, my, yeah, that would be my motion, is the ordinance-based approach first.
All right. Well, what if we were to discuss having an ad hoc, as you and Richard have been very instrumental in educating us for the budget? What if we were to have an ad hoc for this, so that we could move it along quicker, as you've done for the budget items?
As long as I'm not on it. Yeah.
You've once bitten twice shy. Now, I got you, I got you.
I've been quiet. We're 20, about 26 minutes into this discussion, and, you know, I, I'm ready to vote.
All right. Great. So, we're going to go with the substitute motion, which is Troy's.
Second.
Oh, I thought Richard seconded.
I did not.
Oh, I apologize. Do we have a second for Troy's?
Could you restate your motion?
Yeah, my motion is that we'll evaluate the ordinance, looking specifically at the lowest responsible bid criteria, seeing if we can get that ironed out in an ordinance and potentially evaluate it as it pertains to some sort of ballot measure going forward.
And do you support the ad hoc?
And I would support an ad hoc group that could evaluate that.
Any second.
So, if I can ask the maker of the motion, would you consider language in your motion that would make it, and I tend to agree with you in terms of the time, I look at the calendar, I think that we're hitting right up against the wall. It would have been far better to have this maybe a month or two ago, right? And then we're meeting every other month, I mean, the other, I mean, once a month. And so, if you would consider language that makes it very clear to staff that this will be on the ballot for 2016, and no fuzz, no fooling, that, you know, again, let's clean it up, let's get this thing done right, and then we put it to the people. And, again, that'll be the council at that time, right? Whoever that's comprised of, you know, looking at two of the colleagues here. But I'd be supportive of that. I think it makes sense to do it right. And ultimately, I think it is to get it to the people and let the people decide, and I'm willing to wait to have that patience, so.
So, Warren, I would accept that motion. I would just say that between now and whatever staff brings back, and it'll be this council, but there would have to be an evaluation to vote one more time on the 2016 issue, right? I mean, we don't know, like Rich says, we don't know what we're actually asking the public to vote on yet. Are you saying in this motion, no matter what, it's 2016, we're putting something on the ballot, whether we need it or not?
Well, that's what I'd like to see. Ultimately, I think that's where I'd like to be. So, if I understand what you're after is really, let's revisit the ordinance, let's clean it up, let's make it point to the right places, and make sure that the intent of this body, when it decides, is spelled out. And I have every faith that we will get there. And will we get there in this year, before the elections are all done? Maybe, maybe not. But I think the staff here has the obligation to carry forward and get that all cleaned up. And then that part about pointing to 2016 is to say, staff, you know, really get the council to put it on 2016. Whether the council will do that at that time, they can override it, right? But if we make it part of this, at least, we're looking ahead to the future, we're going to allow ourselves to clean this all up. And then, you know, my intent, although, of course, who knows what happens, is to put it to the people. Again, that's kind of how I'd see it. But I don't think, we can't force them, right? Two years from now, can't force it to happen.
So, I think then, as an objective, to point towards the option of a 2016 ballot measure, yeah, I mean, I.
We can't control it.
Yeah.
I think we just, but I think it's direction to staff, right?
I mean.
The only problem with the 2016 ballot measure, if you're going to wait until November, and the trash contract expires a month later.
Right. You've already had to go through the process.
I don't know how you, you know, take that into account in awarding the next franchise, unless you allow Consolidated to extend for another year beyond that or something, or you call a special election in 2016, in the early part of 2016. I mean, it takes a long time to, as you know, to evaluate proposals.
There's the rub, Troy, is the whole timing, right? So.
Yeah. I, you know, I'm probably not as vexed as you might think I am on this ordinance. I really believe that constructively, we could put together a good ordinance that would probably get support. I think we all learned a valuable lesson through that process. I just don't think we can get it to the ballot, and I think putting it on the ballot politicizes it and ruins really what we're trying to do this year. I just don't want to put that as a priority for us, or at least my one vote of five, so.
All right. So, let's.
One more quick question.
Okay. Go ahead, Rich.
In your opinion, and I realize it's an opinion, is there any chance the contract ends in 2015?
Not without a lawsuit.
Okay.
But yes. With a lawsuit, yes. Without a lawsuit, no.
Okay. I just want to know what timeframe we're really working with, is why I ask. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, Troy's made a substitute motion, and is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, second. So, we're going to take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Can we get, so, evaluate, evaluate the, staff, go back, evaluate the ordinance, look at the potential for changing the ordinance to the lowest responsible bidder, consider ad hoc committee, and consider ballot measure November 2016?
Well, I think we should have an ad hoc committee. I don't think we should consider it. Aren't we saying?
Yeah, assign an ad hoc. It's just, I'm ad hocked out right now after the finance thing.
Assign. Is that what the motion is?
Yeah.
And then Rich seconded. Do you have anything to add, Corey? All right, Kerry, I'm sorry. Do you have anything to add before we take a vote? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No.
No.
Okay. So, was that three?
Two.
Three, two. Okay. So, it passes three, two. All right. We're going to recess into closed session, and.
11 a, council comments?
Oh, I apologize. You're right. We have to go to council comments, and I'm going to start off by deferring to the other councils. I don't have any comments for this evening.
I'll go first.
Warren?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I was able to attend the public, I don't know, was it a hearing? Excuse me, over at the AES Power Plant in Long Beach, and they are embarking on an upgrade to change their power generation to a dual phase. I guess we're going to use both a natural gas fire turbine, and then the byproduct from that is steam, which will turn another turbine, and they're going to, at the end configuration, generate 1.9 megawatts of power, so pretty impressive. I think they're going to be coming up here to do a presentation next month, is that right, city manager?
Yes, June.
And just for the public's information, they supply about 15% of our electricity. They are usually turned on on those days by the, is it, the, who's the Cal? Cal, yeah. Cal ISO would turn them on to make up any shortfalls in energy demand. So, their equipment that they have there is not designed to do the rapid turn-on, rapid shutdown, so this new upgrade will be taking care of that. I attended the Southern California Association of Governments General Assembly, and that's where I voted on the items, as in the report. I also, let's see, on a side, I've had contact by a couple of developers. I just want to make sure everyone knows, it's Highland Point Partners. They are the ones interested in the lot over there, the old webcar lot on Sausalito and Brigham over that way, Serpentine. So, I did talk with him, and he showed the updated product that he has, and imagine it'll be showing up in front of the planning commission and possibly us. And then, the other one is I had a phone contact from Ashish Katana from the Shopop Group, who has, again, renewed their interest in the Super Media, Media Arc, whatever, the site over here, and it looks like they're kind of revisiting that as a possibility. So, I haven't decided on this project or any of them yet. I just want to let the public know that these things are kind of coming. So, with that, I'll turn back to you.
Thank you. Who'd like to go next?
I'll go really quick. On Sunday, went and supported Rob and Debbie Feldman at the Joint Force, or the Jewish Charity Foundation for the JCFs, raced with a view in Long Beach. They had a great turnout. I just wanted to say congratulations to Rob and Debbie. They were able to raise $75,000 for that cause, and it was a fun race. It was good to get out there and good time. Weekend before that, I participated in the Long Beach Children's Hospital Bike Ride down in Long Beach, the Tour of Long Beach. It's been inactive the last couple of weeks. OCSD, I would just invite all the council members in the communities that were having a 60th anniversary state of the district meeting on Wednesday at breakfast at Miles Square Park. And then, I've been getting a lot of calls from folks in the Rossmore Highlands. I think we all have been. And I guess, city manager, maybe it would be helpful just to kind of get an idea. I know I've turned my problem over to you. We have an ad hoc group, or Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem, they're actually dealing directly with the base. So, you know, can you talk a little bit about how you've been coordinating that? And I know, you know, we're trying to keep the residents involved with the composting issue on the base.
Yes, council member Edgar, we have been working with the base, and specifically, I've been working with Lieutenant Colonel Nathan Range. We have had some, a neighborhood meeting with Highlands residents regarding various complaints that they've had on noise, odor, various issues base-related, and the compost and issues that are on the base. The base has been very responsive, at least in terms of responding back to residential questions and complaints, and Lieutenant Colonel Range has answered calls himself and responded to calls. He took me on a tour of the site, so I could see it firsthand and witness anything that is going on there firsthand. We have a follow-up meeting that he is coordinating with the neighborhood residents of the Highland, with the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, myself, the residents that want to be involved over there, and it will be on the base, and that's scheduled for next week. So, we're having that. And we're also trying to have, set up a couple of individual meetings with some other residents that have had similar issues and complaints. The meeting with the Highlands residents will, Nathan Range is trying to get all the players involved in terms of agriband and the farmers and the vector control, and anyone that's involved with the issues over there, so that everyone can see that all hands are on board and working on the issues and the problems that are taking place, and they can hear the questions and issues from the residents firsthand, and he's going to take them out on a tour of the site as well. So, I think it's promising in terms of the relationship with the base and being able to respond to the Highlands residents and others that have had some issues over there at the base.
Great. Thank you. The other thing that I just wanted to put out there is that, you know, kind of the Orange County Sand District related. So, my term as chair ends in June, and I've been talking to Rich about this, too. I'm, again, very thankful that the council has supported me through that whole process over the six years. But I think I'm considering that at the, June, when I do sit down as chair, to potentially make an opportunity for our council to have another rep be a part of that. I think that, you know, I think we've contributed to the most that I can for that organization, and I know that there's been interests, you know, that other people may be interested in serving in that. And if you are, I've talked to Rich and anybody else that's interested, if you want to agendize it, but I'll just throw that out there, I'm open to that. I have a lot of things in motion that I've been really feverishly trying to close out between now and June. Probably the biggest is the assembly or senate bill that I'm pushing through right now. But I think at that point, I think it'd be a good breakpoint and a fresh start. But, so, that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Rich?
Two things. I got to go see, actually, an open St. Isidors, which I don't ever remember having been in there. And second of all, I attended the Irvine Korean Festival, and want to thank the mayor of Irvine for his hospitality. Thank you.
All right, Dean?
Items on activities that I've been on are listed on the website, on my website, which is www.losal.net. I would like to comment on the students that were here at the start of the meeting from Sunburst. They will be, this is class 13. It's hard to believe we've been through six and a half years at this particular point with the students over there at the base, but they will be completing their graduation on the 14th of June, which is on a Saturday this year. That's somewhat unusual. Yet also, the 14th of June is the birthday of the United States Army, and there's potential for some celebration there. I would also mention that the 14th of June is also going to be the graduation of UCI, and they have invited the President of the United States to be their keynote speaker, and they've moved their event to include all of the schools, so everybody will graduate simultaneously in order to hear that, and he will be speaking to them at Anaheim Stadium. That being said, there's no confirmation that the President may be in Los Alamos on that day, but there's a strong likelihood that Joint Forces Training Base will be hosting him and hopefully involving him in some type of activity saluting the Army. So, I want to say congratulations to the Sunburst class of 2013, 2014, rather, our 13th class, and July will be starting in the 14th class. I was also appointed this past week, and I want to thank the mayor for stepping up with the city selection committee. I was appointed to the Emergency Medical Care Committee for the county, which was a seat that opened up, and nobody else seemed to step forward, so I threw my hat in, and it happened. Yeah, September the 4th, or, I'm sorry, June the 14th is also Flag Day, so there's a lot of symbolism going on on the 14th, and Los Alamos will probably be very busy and in the news in one fashion or another. But, I've lost my train.
We got five minutes before we have to extend the meetings.
But, yeah, no. I want to thank the mayor for taking that effort from the standpoint of pushing that forward, and I have nothing further. Thank you.
Great. We're going to recess into closed, I'm sorry, items from the city manager.
Just mentioned, there's a Westcom board meeting tomorrow with the council. Mayor Pro Tem Murphy is the board member, and staff will be there, too. And just, we have, I have hired a new executive assistant, benefits coordinator starts tomorrow, Chelsea Wilson, from the, previously working at the chamber. She's going to be working for us, starting tomorrow.
Great. And so, since Ed was so nice to stay here this entire time for his last meeting before he comes back and visits us, we just wanted to say a special thank you to all the efforts you've put into our city and the good things that you've done for your neighbors. You did. You did. You're a fighter.
I guess I'm driven budget all the way around.
Right. Well, enjoy your new living arrangements, and we do hope you come back.
City Attorney. I'm sure I'll make, like...
Perfect. Perfect. City Attorney.
Yes, Madam Mayor. I attended the League of California Cities City Attorney's Annual Conference about a week and a half ago. They had many very informative papers, and I'm going to send a link to those papers to you. You can download them yourselves, but I think you'll find some of them pretty interesting. I've already shared a few with the city manager and community development director and recreation community, whatever. Cory.
I do the same thing.
Could you indicate which ones we should be reading when you send it out?
Yeah.
Pardon?
Could you indicate which ones you feel are...
I will.
Okay, thank you.
And then, we have some closed sessions. We have closed sessions on labor negotiations for unrepresented employees, city clerk, well, that's actually, that's not a negotiation, right?
Not at this point.
That's evaluation. Then, we have conference with labor negotiator Gregory Cordner regarding the Los Alamos City Employees Association, conference with labor negotiators Greg Cordner and Kerry Reisman regarding the Police Officers Association. Those are subject to Government Code Section 5495-7.6, as is negotiations with Brett Plumlee, city manager, regarding executive management, middle management, and non-management employees, same code section. And finally, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, pending litigation pursuant to Section 5495-6.9, subsection D4, two potential cases, not three. So, maybe we'll be done before midnight.
All right. Yeah, we're going to order breakfast, Rich says. At least donut. All right, we're in recess into closed session.